Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regaining of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District Board of Education. Please rise and join us in the singing of the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for joining us this evening. Let's start with introducing my fellow board members. We have our student board member, Ranit Batra.
Good evening.
Trustee Suzanne Ordway.
Hi, everyone.
Trustee Shelley Clark.
Good evening, everybody.
Our clerk is Laura Brat.
Good evening.
Our vice president, Rachel Hurd.
Good, thanks for being here.
And myself, board president, Ken Mintz. First, I'd like to report out on the actions taken before this meeting. We met in closed session, which we're allowed to do on only specific topics. We had two items to report out this evening. First, during tonight's closed session, the Board of Education authorized staff to issue a statement of charges for dismissal on two permanent certificated employees. On the second item during this evening's closed session, the board appointed unanimously the following staff effective July 1st. Lauren Faulkner as coordinator curriculum and instruction, Kimberly Murray, assistant principal Diablo Vista Middle School, and Kate Brizik, assistant principal Iron Horse and Pine Valley Middle Schools. Congratulations to each of them. Item 7.0 is acceptance of minutes. 7.1, the minutes of our meeting on May 3rd. Any upgrades, omissions, anything, kind of a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
The motion was made by board member Clark and seconded by board member Ordway. Roll call vote. Student board member Batra.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brat.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
Board member Mintz.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 8.0 is agenda approval and consent action. 8.1 is acceptance of the open session agenda. Just point out that we have a revision in front of you for item 10.1. Can I have a motion for acceptance of the open session agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by board member Brat and seconded by board member Hurd. Roll call vote. Student board member.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brat.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
Board member Mintz.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is approval of the consent agenda. For those in the audience, our consent agenda is made up of items that are considered routine in nature, and it handled as a single vote administratively. However, if there's an item that anyone from the board, the staff, or the audience wishes to pull to be discussed with other action items instead of part of consent, we shall do so. I have two cards that are asking for us to move off of consent to item 12.6. We will do so. 12.6 would then become item 10.5. Are there any other items that board members wish to remove? If not, can I have a motion on the revised consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
The motion was made by board member Ordway and seconded by board member Clark. Roll call vote. Student board member Batra.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brat.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
Board member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 9.0 reports to the board. 9.1 LGBTG+ Pride Month resolution. And we have with us Hong Nguyen to bring that item forward to us.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendents, staff, students, and community. My name is Hong Nguyen, and I am the Director of Educational Equity. June is our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ Pride Month. In San Ramon Valley Unified School District, we model, advocate, actively support, and promote the inclusive and respectful treatment of all students, employees, family members, and community members. Our district values and welcomes diversity in our student body, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our families, and is committed to embracing, supporting, and celebrating our community's diversity through inclusion, equity, and belonging, as well as preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity, thereby empowering each and every student to reach their full potential. June is a time to celebrate our dynamic LGBTQ+ community, raise awareness of services, and foster a dialogue to promote healthy, safe, and fulfilling school climates for all. In schools, we have our genders and sexuality alliances, GSAs, and prism clubs at half of our elementary schools to support LGBTQ+ students and allies. In the month of June, our school district, as well as schools across our districts, will proudly fly the Progress Pride flags, and it encourages recognition of the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community. We recognize the need to diversify our curriculum, and that includes our LGBTQ+. Here are a few recommended read aloud books for LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Here's a quote from Harvey Milk, a first openly gay man to be elected to public office in California and one of the first in the United States. Hope will never be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you, Hong. I do have one speaker card on this item from Mike Arata. You have three minutes.
Your Pride Month resolution did not appear in the Friday packet. So I've asked Cindy. She says that yes, indeed, the resolution will be same as last year's, June 15th of last year. Among other things, that resolution proclaimed June Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, and declares that the district proudly fly the so-called Progress Pride flag, and that's what you've already heard. The resolution, again going from last year, worries about allegedly LGBTQ+ children in transition kindergarten. That's ages five, by the way, through grade 12. But the more immediately alarming issue is the district's feverish indoctrination of even elementary children, again, the five-year-olds included, with homosexualist and transgender narratives and propaganda, when instructional coach Corby Saunders and country club principal Kristy Glaser have called queering "the classroom." For the youngest children, it's read aloud picture books with homosexual and transgender themes already pictured, and I'll show some more later. An example is when Aiden became a brother, though Aiden is a girl. Another is the book Prince, in which the two male protagonists defeat a dragon, then fall in love and get married. Kids of age five are often just learning to tie their shoes. They're insecure, highly vulnerable, and anxious. They don't need the confusion introduced by homosexual and transgender activism, including in opposite pronouns. Ages six through early puberty mark what Freud called the latency period, with little or no interest in sexual matters, as the kids gain cognitive and physical skills at rapid rates, if they aren't distracted by LGBTQ prism clubs hidden from parents. Latency period kids generally have same-sex friends, making them targets for activists who suggest to kids that that means they're homosexual, or since in fact they have no sexual interest, and especially if they grow uncomfortable with their bodies when puberty exchanges begin, they must be transgender then, say some. And the pride flag issue? You already implement annual disruption of a tax-funded school day with a Day of Silence, as occurred this year once again on April 22nd, and once again in cooperation with Gay Lesbian Straight Education Network, a special interest from the East Coast. As I asked, March 29th and April 19th, what exactly are your criteria for establishing such distinctive treatment for special interests, whether it's days of silence or flag displays?
Okay, for the audience, I just want to point out that this, first off, was, the resolution itself was not an action item for this meeting, because at the beginning of the school year, the board looks at all of our resolutions throughout the course of the year. We review them all at that time, and we approve them at that point in time. So all the resolutions were made available to public back in, I think, August. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, we will move on. Oh, please, go ahead.
I just want to say that, you know, sometimes it's hard to have an open mind. Sometimes it's hard to think about change. I know that for me, for my generation, and I think many of us in this room, that we grew up in a cisgender heteronormative world. In fact, some might say we were indoctrinated to be cisgender and heteronormative. I didn't have any friends that had two dads. In fact, it was illegal for my friends to have two dads. The idea of a gender spectrum, of expanding the binary of male and female, is a concept that, I mean, I still struggle with, and I have a son who's trans. Pronouns can be hard. You know, we were, it's, it's, it's in my brain, it's written in my brain, that it's he/she. So the idea of they as a singular pronoun is sometimes like mental gymnastics, and that's hard, but we do it because we have an open mind, change is important. Our students are really one generation from that heteronormal cisgender world, and they're fighting that fight every single day. And things like flying the pride flag, things like supporting GSA and prism clubs, things like ensuring that there's gender-neutral bathrooms that are safe for our students, that there is curriculum, that there are books in the libraries that our students learn in, is extremely important. We're behind them. We need to step up and support them, and I think that this resolution really shows that we're doing that. And I'm incredibly grateful for the strength that our students show in this change and ensuring that we, as adults, open our minds and see them for who they are, and allow them to live authentically and be the people that they dream of being. So, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. If I can add, the Board of Education passed resolutions in support of Day of Silence since 2016, and it's done so in our recognition of our commitment to providing an educational environment that is safe and inclusive, free of bullying and harassment for each and every student in our district. And we passed this resolution in support of Pride Month. The pride flags are a representation of that commitment to support each and every one of our students. We believe it is important to listen to the concerns and needs of all of our students, and want to ensure that we are addressing them so that no student feels marginalized at schools, and the flags are meant as a sign of respect to all. And that's my comment on this.
President Mintz, if I could just add, a conversation I just had recently in a public setting with a number of people where this issue was brought up, and it was the board, even though I'm not the board, I was representing you in this space, and I was asked about the political nature of this. And I was very direct with the group that I was meeting in Danville, and I said, "I'm not going to talk about the political nature of this, because you're free to have whatever political view you would like to have, but I'm going to tell you a true story." And this is a true story. I said, "I was talking to a parent of a third grader, and that parent was very uncomfortable that there was any discussion about anything orientation or gender-related in the classroom, very uncomfortable about any curriculum resources that were connected to the classroom, and wanting it to stop." And my response to this particular parent was, "I hear you, I understand your views, but I need to look at this from a different perspective, and I'm wondering if you'll go with me for a moment. Would you want your nine-year-old to be silent at school?" The answer, of course, is no. "Would you want your nine-year-old to share your nine-year-old's experience of the weekend at school?" The parent's answer was, "No." I said, "I actually know that there's a nine-year-old in your child's class who has two moms, and that child is struggling to find themselves. So your child needs to have voice and space, and every child needs voice and space. And if we take this from the political, which I totally get, and place it into the experience of kids, this is not about making anybody anything. This is about ensuring that there is space." When I shared that, even though there were certain political views in the room, the person who was facilitating the meeting did say, "You've given us something different to think about." So I'm not trying to convince anyone of anything in my role, except to say, "I am grateful to our board for giving us direction to provide that space. Regardless of what people believe, we serve 30,000 kids, tremendous diversity of experience, and when we focus solely on kids, it's our absolute imperative that that space is provided." So I wanted to offer that because it was a specific experience just recently happened, and at least the sharing of a story with no names in schools, because that would be very inappropriate, but it is a true story, did have an impact on that conversation. So I wanted to offer it here.
Thank you. We're going to move now into public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, please fill out a card after you come up and speak. You can come up and speak at the podium on this item.
With a card or with a comment?
You can come up first and speak, but please fill out a card so we have a record of it.
I just want you to know that I disagree with those statements.
Okay, okay, thank you. No, no, I'm sorry, not going to get into a debate. Yes. You have three minutes.
I just had a question.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, my name is Ben Horn. I just had a question for Han. You mentioned the list of books that are available for read aloud in elementary school. What's the criteria for deciding when and how those books could be read aloud to elementary school kids?
Actually, that is... Go ahead. That is something that's incorporated in another agenda item later on in the evening, so I might suggest that we actually deal with that when the presentation happens. It was just moved off of consent, I think.
Right, it's now number 10.6.
We can, we can talk about that when it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind just filling out a speaker card that you spoke in, so we have a record of it. Thank you. Moving on to item 9.2, public comment for non-agendaized items. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on anything that was not on our agenda. Unfortunately, given the Brown Act violations, open meeting laws, if it's something that you're bringing up that is not on this current agenda, the board cannot respond to it, get into any conversation, and definitely cannot take any action at this time. However, please be assured that we are listening to your comments and would be directing staff to follow up as appropriate. Given that, I have a number of speaker cards for item... Let me see, one thing, I do have a card, I'm sorry, I did have another card for 9.1. Let me do that first. Taylor Denbroder, did you want to speak on 9.1?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Sorry, I missed that.
Hi, my name's Taylor Denbrode. I'm a member of the San Ramon-Danville chapter of PFLAG, and I just wanted to come up just really quickly and thank you guys, thank the board, for passing the Pride Month resolution as a member of the LGBTQ+ community myself, and working so front-facing with the LGBTQ+ community. It's just really amazing to see the steps that you guys are making and taking to really show, make a difference, and just show that you guys are being inclusive and that you're allies for everyone in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Moving on now with other public comments on non-agendaized items. First up, Mike Arata.
As I said at the April 19th meeting, your instructional coach, Corby Saunders, with self-declared plural pronouns, they and them, promotes a long list of read aloud picture books with homosexual and transgender themes for little kids' storytime. The sign to my right shows the first page of Saunders's numerous listings. Her categories include books about gender, LGBTQ main characters, trans representation, challenging gender stereotypes, and then different types of families. Saunders and country club principal Kristy Glaser have even led a national-level teacher discussion on what they call "queering the classroom." Superintendent Malloy attempted to rationalize the use of such read aloud materials at that meeting by citing the so-called Fair Act, now Section 60040 of the California Education Code. He said falsely that our educators must do this, it is a requirement, it actually must be done. That's all incorrect. The code section quoted by Mr. Malloy speaks about board-adopted materials and requires portrayal of the societal role and contributions of various groups, including lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Americans, "to the total development of California and the United States," quote unquote. So I wrote to Mr. Malloy the very next day, asking which, if any, of these materials had been board-adopted at that point, and nearly all the books are fictional as well. So I asked which of them regard contributions to the total development of California and the United States. Mr. Malloy also said that the parent, the district regards parents as partners. So I asked if parents are informed comprehensively about the use of these books, since they groom very young, very vulnerable, and impressionable children, to think prematurely about homosexuality and transgenderism and intrusion on normal childhood development. Further, if parents are considered partners, why was there not, why was there an effort, rather, to hide LGBTQ prism clubs participation from parents, and why are affirmative opt-in permission slips not required for that participation now, or for the hearing of these read aloud access books? Now, a month later, Mr. Malloy has still failed to answer those questions. That's not surprising, since Mr. Malloy in early 2020 bragged about pushing the envelope on LGBTQ issues in Toronto. Our educators must do this, it's a requirement, it must be done? No, none of that is true. So will the district now halt its pernicious, perverse assaults on young minds, hearts, and souls in homosexual and transgender-themed read aloud storytime? Again, what Kristy Glaser and Corby Saunders have called "queering the classroom."
Our next speaker, Latoya Wallace.
I would like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to speak today. As a member of the LGBT community, me and my wife really do appreciate you guys bringing light to this issue, although that is not why I'm here. I have a son, and we allowed him to decide how he wanted to deal with the bullying issue at his school. Unfortunately, his resolution to dealing with this bully did not work out, and in the first week of May, we made the school aware of this issue. All the bullying has not continued, it's only because we have elected to remove our son from the school due to the staff not doing or following through with the promises that they made to us. And all of this happened all within a 72-hour period. We went from Monday announcing what was happening with our son in regards to a bully. Keep in mind, my son is 4'11", 70 pounds. His bully is 6'2" and over 200 pounds. He has been slapped, he has been choked, and he has even humped at his school. And the school's resolution in this is to lie to our son, letting him know that they plan on keeping him safe from his bully, and none of these things happened. We asked repeatedly the same day of reporting the bully not to name our son to his bully, which happened by the vice principal herself that exact same day. We also asked the principal of that school to please follow up, assure us that something is being done about my son's bully. And when brought to a meeting with our family and Chris George, part of the district, we were told by that principal that the bully would be sent away, at least during the school period, at least during the lunch period, to ensure that our son would have no harassment during his lunch period. That exact same day, not even three hours later, my son went to that table, and his bully was sitting at that table. He then proceeded to stand up far away and eat his lunch standing up. I am highly upset and offended at the school's lack of keeping their word in regards to my family and my son, and therefore, we have removed our son now from that school and have continued to speak to Chris George in regards to how we plan on homeschooling our son for the remainder of the year now. Because of all of this, that happened all within 72 hours of reporting. And again, the only reason why we didn't report the initial incident was because our son was afraid of this exact, where the school was not going to do what they were going to do and keep him safe. Thank you.
Excuse me. So Christine, your staff is going to continue?
Absolutely. I was going to see if our executive secondary director, John Campopiano, is in the back of the room. I was hoping he could connect with you before you leave today. Okay. Okay. I'm going to have him connect with you before you walk out. Thank you.
Next speaker, Bob Allen.
I'm a teacher at Cal High, and I'm gay. As a reminder, I knew I was gay when I was 10 years old and did not publicly identify myself as gay until 23 years later. I was allegedly straight and tried to be straight for 33 years. I'm also a proud union member where I support all students, but today I want to talk about supporting our LGBTQ students. I would like to thank the Board for recognizing Pride Month. It's always a good thing to do, and this leads into a story that I, about a student, a conversation I had with a student. I do not think the student would mind me describing her as a conservative Catholic student. She's in my statistics class, we've had lots of discussions, and I love the way she thinks. She did ask, "Why do we have things like the Day of Silence still?" And I said, "Well, it would be great if we didn't. However, we still have people in our community and across the country that would like to silence LGBTQ voices, specifically mine." I pointed out the student in her class who used gay as a slur to my face, and the response to that. He immediately apologized, but the way it was dropped so easily still means that we have work. Now, I pointed out other states in the country that are writing laws where I might not be able to teach just because of who I am. I wouldn't be able to be allowed to talk about my partner, Michael, because we happen to be gay, and that's a sad thing. I did remind her, and I thanked her, because as, as the arc of justice moves towards, oh, hang on, lost that train of thought, the arc of morality moves towards justice, it's her generation that are making changes. And I would like to say one more thing in response to the assertion how I, as a gay teacher, have some power to influence students. If I had that power, I would ask them to show up on time, do their homework, stay off their phones, and be interested in the difference between a confidence interval for means and a sample Z test for proportions. Again, thank you for adopting the resolution. I hope for the day where none of us have to be up here defending students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next speaker, Rick Jarrett.
Yes, Rick Jarrett from San Ramon. I'm a grandparent, I have two kids, and I have a four-year-old granddaughter. Preparing for this meeting, which I just found out about earlier this week, but my, my thought is that the schools are here to help the parents teach their kids, and primarily it's the reading, writing, arithmetic, the three Rs. Obviously, things have gotten more complicated over the years, there's more to teach, but if you're going to get off the three Rs, I'd rather see you focus on things like the family, you know? Teach our kids to be good parents, teach our kids to be good spouses, teach our kids to be good citizens. Focus on those things, and you can do it in a more general way, so you don't have to get into specifics of gender. Now, last night I called a friend of mine, he's transgender, it turns out, and I told him I was going to come to this meeting, and we talked about, what could I say that might make some sense? And the one thing I said, I understand that schools teaching young kids about transgender and the gay lifestyle and so forth, and his suggestion to me was that I should tell you, do not present it to young kids. We didn't talk about age specifically, but probably pre, pre-teenagers. We didn't talk about age specifically, but probably pre, pre-teenagers, because they're not gonna understand all the ramifications and all the details of it. It'll be confusing to some, maybe hurtful to many, who knows? And the other thing was said here a few minutes ago, I have a friend who's transgender, and, you know, I don't bully him, I don't give him a hard time, I may tease him a little bit, but he appreciates it, because he knows that's the way things are. And I was gonna say is, I didn't learn to teach, I didn't learn how to treat a person like that in school. I learned it from my family, and I learned it from my church. I think the school is gonna have a tough job trying to teach kids law and order, teach them morality, et cetera. You know, it's gonna be a tough battle. So I think, if anything, the school should probably have a class for parents once or twice a semester to help parents raise their kids. To extremes, I almost think before a person gets married nowadays and has kids, have kids, they should almost go to a class and get a license. I mean, you need a fishing license to catch fish. Here, we're raising kids, and in the school, school business, you probably know, a lot of parents don't have a clue on how to raise their kids. Anyhow.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Sorry.
Leonard Matthews III.
Two weeks ago, I asked this Board to investigate why the superintendent of our district had arbitrarily shut down a well-supported three-point plan to disrupt white nationalist activities that has plagued our district and schools and community of late. I've yet to receive an answer. So this time, I'll address the Board, but this time, I will also address you, the parents and the voters of this district. To you, the parents and the voters of this district, this well-supported plan is four years in the making. Non-white students will learn to see white nationalists not as intimidating, but see them as irrelevant, weak-minded, and not worth their time. Students of European descent will be made immune to the white nationalist number-one recruitment tool and given a way to clearly differentiate themselves from white nationalists in the eyes of their peers, receiving an identity that recognizes European-Americans as longtime allies and not oppressors. A plan that focuses on what makes us alike and not different from one another, and guides students towards not being judgmental of one another. Again, this plan is well-supported, according to Dr. Misha Beasley, suggested by Dr. Malloy himself. She writes, and I quote, "I left the conversation convinced of your dedication to ensuring students see the humanity in their peers before race and/or ethnicity. Your press, your passion to share your knowledge and understanding is inspiring. It is my understanding that you will continue to advocate for your curriculum to be integrated into the Ethnic Studies course for all high schools. If framed with adolescent student development in mind, could contribute to the continual formation of the Ethnic Studies course. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me, and I wish you continued success as a teacher and advocate for humanity." A 33-year teaching veteran of this who received some of my information wrote, and I quote, "The purpose of the pedagogical take on Europe, on this set, set in, this plan set in Ethnic Studies, is intellectually challenging and liable in its purpose in the struggle against white tribe supremacy." She goes on to write, "This is an exciting and important academic offering worthy of inclusion of Ethnic Studies course. I hope the current San Ramon Valley Unified School District High School Ethnic Studies instructors make good use of this important work. I'd recommend sharing it as a source beyond San Ramon Valley Unified as well. On a personal note, I will be using this, what you have crafted for my independent study and to better my work at the elementary level." I have young teachers that just signed up and said, "If we can quote, if we can add our pronouns, we can add our tribes." And I added mine below, and he goes on to say, "From now, the micro-identity work for me, but that may change as I explore this paradigm shift." So please tell me, with all of these credentials, and there's more to come, because I will be back, why we have arbitrarily stopped this decision? I would like an answer. I'll be back.
Thank you. Next speaker, Lisa Worth.
The definition of hate speech. Abusive or threatening speech or writing that expresses prejudice against a particular group, especially on the bias of race, religion, or sexual orientation. I come to the school board meetings and listen to hate speech. It is sad that the Brown Act protects hate speech. I stand here once again, asking parents in the community to get involved, show up and be present at these meetings. As a group of parents and administrators, we have expectations that our children behave a certain way in our schools. There's an expectation that they don't bully their peers, there's an expectation that they don't use hate speech towards their peers. LGBTQ, Black, Latino, Asian, White, Indian, Jewish, Mormon, Catholic, people of all color, ethnic, and religious backgrounds attend our schools. The only thing that must change is that we must embrace it and accept it. Hate is an awful disease, but it is curable. I was in school in Southern California in 1992 during the LA riots. What I witnessed during those three days was horrific and eye-opening. If anybody had told me then what I would be seeing in 2022, that still so much hate towards race, religion, and our LGBT community, I would have told them that they were dead wrong. I hope as a community, we can show our kids that we don't tolerate it. If the adults practice a no-tolerance stance to hate, then the kids will follow. They learn from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 9.3, Association President's Report. Tammy?
Good evening, I'm Tammy Caslucio, President of CSEA in this district. I represent the almost 1,000 classified employees in our district, and I am also a classified employee in the district. I would like to wish all of the CSEA classified employees a happy Classified Employees Week. Our theme for this year is classified, we bring it every day. This statement rings true of all classified employees in this district. We are truly thankful and appreciative of all the work we do every day for our students. The district would not function without each one of us. Before you this evening, item 10.3, we are seeking your approval for a new and revised, for new and revised position titles and salary range placements in certain classifications in the Child Nutrition Department in the 2223 school year. Your approval would be greatly appreciated. I first want to again thank all of the employees working in child nutrition. Your dedicated, dedication and hard work is not going unnoticed. I want to thank the CSEA negotiations team, Joanne Buckley, Mona Monger-Malani, Jose Pinón, Robin Ambler, and Joanna Canaparo, and our labor rep, Priscilla Elliott, for the in-depth conversations, questions, and collaborations. I would also like to thank Zeta Riker, Latonya Williams, Roginsky, for diligently working through this process with us. Zeta is the first child nutrition director in the years I've been president that have ever increased salaries across the board in the department. We have been so short-staffed in the apartment, in the department, and we are hopeful that this change will help us recruit and fill the vacancies we have. Zeta has also recognized the hard work of the, and by making these changes, our hope is that it will help retain the employees that we have. We look forward to continue conversations and collaboration. Finally, I would also like to congratulate Student Trustee Ronit Batra on completing his term as the district's first student trustee. I can honestly say, I know that having a student, student representation on the Board has been a longtime goal of this district. Ronit, it's been a pleasure to meet you and interact with you, not only at the Board meetings, but working with you through Student Senate. I have seen you grow, and I enjoyed hearing you representing the voices of our students. Congratulations as well as your upcoming graduation and college at UPenn. I know you will do great things, and thank you for dedication to this important position. This is our last Board meeting before the end of the school year. I want to wish all of our students good luck for finals. I would like to congratulate, congratulate our graduation seniors. This has been another stellar year in the San Ramon Valley Unified School District, wishing everyone a much-needed summer break. Hang in there, and the end of school is almost here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Laura?
Good evening, I also echo my colleague Tammy's congratulations to the class of 2022 and all of our grades as we move on to the next chapter of their lives, and also echo thank you for the work that you've done. It's been a pleasure having you on here, and it's so great to be the first you will mark in history. I also want to congratulate those who we celebrated earlier today, those who have given years of service to the children and students of the San Ramon Valley. We are in deep gratitude for all that they have done. The lives that they've touched number into the thousands. Their gifts have not gone unnoticed. I'd also like to report that Servia completed our ratification vote on our bell-scheduled addendum with a 96.4% let me see, as I lose my place, approval. Servia members have a long history of always returning to the table to negotiate as long as students are the focus, with the understanding that was original, that was originally thought to be the, to be difficult facilities issues in regards to housing expanded TK programs, when that didn't translate into actuals and a closer review of our schools utilizing slip reading in kindergarten was done. Servia was very supportive of negotiating an addendum that would allow the status quo to remain. We want to emphasize, though, that our kindergarten teachers here are incredibly talented and caring educators. Whether a child has the benefit of a staggered reading schedule or learns in a whole-class setting with a small, organized reading groups, we know that each and every one of our members puts forth 110% to ensure these little ones have the best foundational experience possible. Good evening, my name is Lorfinko, President of Servia and the nearly, and the over 1,700 non-managerial certificated personnel in the district. Once again, I'd like to acknowledge the land that we're standing on is that of the Aloney Nation and the Takahn Tribe. We take a moment to reflect on those who came before us, their lives and sacrifices, and how we can and should honor their land. In reflecting on this land acknowledgement this evening, I would be remiss if I didn't address the tragedies of Buffalo and Laguna Woods. Our hearts are broken as we grieve for the victims of these horrific acts of gun violence. We grieve for their families and their friends. We grieve for those lives forever changed. We grieve for their communities. It is clear that we are seeing an epidemic of hate across our country. It must be called out. We must condemn it. We cannot be so numb that we find ourselves in a state of complacency. Racially motivated hate crimes and acts of violence, violent extremism are harms against all of us, and we must do everything we can to ensure that our communities are safe from such acts. Violence such as this has been allowed to permeate in our communities under the veil of the First and Second Amendment. We've seen it in our own schools and right here in our boardroom. We can do better. We must do better. Our students demand we do better. As we approach the end of the academic school year, we must challenge ourselves to prepare for what is next. With that, we cannot sit idly by as others threaten our students' emotional health by attacking their authentic selves. We cannot be silent by painting over the threats against our Black and Brown and Yellow students, and we must stand up and be the voice of those who can't speak for themselves. Our students need to see themselves in their teachers and in their leaders at their school sites. They need to know there is honor in being a person of color or a person in the LGBTQ community and being an educator. They deserve to feel safe on our campuses, knowing that we will be their shield, sometimes literally. And that we cannot condone hate speech. This is not free speech. It comes with a cost, and we cannot allow our students to bear that cost. Servia's Diversity and Education Committee recently met and created a plan, one that we look forward to sharing soon with management. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Education must enable one to sift and weigh evidence, to discern the true from the false, the real from the unreal, the facts from the fiction. The function of education, therefore, is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." We must remember that intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. Dr. King did not stand back while others picked up the fight. He was front and center. His words resonate because of how he stood. We owe it to our students to stand up, speak out, and proclaim hate does not have a home here. I close in memory of Celeste Cheney, Roberta Drury, Pearlie Young, Haywood Patterson, Catherine Macy, Ruth Whitfield, Erin Salter, Andre McNeil, Margis Morrison, Jerry Tally, and John Shang. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Moving on to Item 9.4, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Mints. As I prepared my reflections for the meeting tonight, I realized that even though we have two more Board meetings in June, this is our last Board meeting before graduation. And so I would like to take an opportunity to offer a few reflections upon, on this past year, very briefly. But before I do that, I think that the meetings that I've attended in our community over the last couple of weeks, and the meetings that we have here in this boardroom, speak to me pretty profoundly regarding why deep learning, as we define it, is the driver in our strategic directions. Just to be very brief, when we speak about deep learning, we're speaking about helping our kids understand all of the foundational elements, the reading, writing, and math, as we call it traditionally. And we fulfill the standards in the state of California. And when we use the term deep or deeper learning, we're also thinking about how we age appropriately, provide opportunities for our kids to think about all that's going on around us, and age appropriately how we help kids understand the diverse views, the intense reactions, the media, the social media, the tragedies that have gone on, like the shooting in Buffalo. There's no making sense of those things, but we have to figure out how to navigate those things. And every time I'm in spaces where there are deeply intense views, I wonder what it would take to create the conditions for as many people as possible to come to the same table, or at least to the same room. But not in a room just to hear different views, which is important, and it's everyone's legal right, but a room that actually allows us to learn from each other and with each other, so that we can come to some terms and how to move forward. Probably this space isn't the best one for that, truthfully, but we've got to figure out ways to do it. Because that's what deep learning is about, navigating complexity, navigating challenge, figuring out how to make sense of stuff, because there's so much going on. So meetings like this, meetings I've had recently, speak to me about why the strategic directions of this district is so important. We're gonna keep talking about it and listening and engaging, but I think regardless of anyone's views, in this room or beyond, we've got to help our kids think through stuff. And again, because I've heard it in this boardroom a lot, age appropriately, that is a commitment. But what I want to talk about tonight, because I wasn't planning to talk about that, is some of the highlights of what I would suggest was not a normal year, whatever normal means anymore. We had different challenges this year, but we also had amazing opportunities. And a couple of the things, because I've been out and about asking questions, and these are in no order of priority, but what are some of the things we've been able to do this year that have been really, really great in the eyes of our partners? And these are some of the things, as I said, in no particular order. A record number of AP exams in an in-person environment were proctored, administered, and supported in this district. Child nutrition, even though it took us a while and continues to take us time to get it right, there's so much happening in this space involving our students as well, to feed every student in our district. The additional mental health supports, especially in our elementary school, funded by one-time funding at this point, hopefully going forward with ongoing funding everywhere I go, 100%. hopefully going forward with ongoing funding everywhere I go, 100% explicit data regarding what's different this year compared to last year, and we'll be sharing that in our Social Emotional Well-Being Report next fall. Classified employees, certificated employees, and our students being awarded at all levels and in so different environments for their successes and their achievements. Our Student Senate, our Student Board Member, we've taken it to a new level with your leadership, Ronnet, and I know we're going to speak about that a little bit later, but we can't take that for granted, and we're only going to get better based upon this foundation. Though social media can be a challenging space, social media is filled right now with what's happening in 36 sites, and it's exciting. And a year ago, our social media connected to our district unfortunately was filled with all kinds of other challenges: masks and returning to school and pandemic and all the rest. And I'm not suggesting we're through all of that, but what I can say is social media is speaking positively regarding what's going on in 36 places. I'm thinking about some of our steering committees, our advisory committees, and Special Education, our CAC, and the ways in which the partnerships that we're growing with staff and parents and our students are taking us to new levels. Just think about the Vocation and Career Fair that started this year and will only go to better places moving forward because of that very important collaboration. I'm thinking about our crossing guards, our bus drivers, our child nutrition leads all throughout our schools, our custodial staff. And again, I don't want to get into lists because I'll always exclude by accident, but what I'm thinking is, as I visit schools, and I was out four this week, I was at four last week, there's just a lot to celebrate in the way in which, and this is the telltale sign, I'm walking on a campus with a principal, and I'm watching how the kids are engaging each other and the adults. Yes, we have some challenges, I'm not going to say otherwise, but we also have a lot of great relationships that are moving kids forward. I need to think about our COVID response team, our nurses, the other members of that team, our retirees that we brought back to assist us with contact tracing. We were thrown into a business that we had no expertise to be in, and we somehow, with the help of public health, became public health people. I will never say a public health expert because we are not, but we actually learned how to be in a public health space for the last two years, and so many members of our team were part of that, right down to a COVID call center that a number of our clerical admin staff assisted us with just so we could pick up a phone when parents didn't know, what am I supposed to do now that there's been an exposure? Mask, no mask, vaccine, no vaccine. I mean, we had all of our sheets, as you know, and I'm thinking back on what we were able to do there. We've opened up two innovation centers. We continue to expand our understanding on how to serve kids through the wellness centers. We're still moving forward with curriculum adoptions and the deep cohorts and all the work we're doing in curriculum and instruction to get better. Student clubs, performing arts, visual arts, athletics, all up and running, and you've all been out experiencing that. Virtual academies, independent study, and as we look to the future, enhanced learning opportunities, the notion of universal TK, like there's so much that is happening that I think that this last school, this last meeting of the school year, I wanted to highlight. I want to publicly thank our cabinet team and our extended cabinet team, who I rely on on a daily basis for their 24/7, and many of them are here, approach to everything. I want to thank our staff throughout the district. I want to thank you, our board, because I can speak as the superintendent, I can't speak for you. There have been many challenges that you've had to navigate, and I appreciate your leadership and direction. And I'll close the way I started. We're here for our students. We need to listen more to our students. I hope, Ronnet, you've seen not only an attempt, but actually some impact related to that intent. We're going to keep moving in that direction on a solid foundation. We are so proud of our 2022 graduates, and we're proud of all of our students, to be honest. And I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to communicate again why I believe our strategic directions are meaningful. There are no answers, but we've got to be able to navigate, and that even through the challenges, we have a lot of great things happening in this district. So thank you for the time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Malloy. Moving on to item 9.5, we have our Student Board Member Report. Ronnet.
Thank you. So first, I wanted to thank Dr. Malloy for that amazing recap of this past year. I think he really highlighted a lot of the great work that has been done within our district, and it's pretty clear that we have a lot to celebrate. Recently, we had AP testing at the high school level and CAS testing at the younger grade levels. We had Decision Day for seniors. Spring sports are coming to an end, and promotion and graduation is in about two weeks. Having said that, there's also high levels of stress surrounding some of these activities. So AP test, as Dr. Malloy mentioned, we had a record number of in-person exams administered this year. Going to campus at 7:00 AM in the morning or at 12:00 PM, depending on whenever our exams were, and seeing so many people flock to the gyms or the libraries or large venues where all these tests could be held really showed how academically motivated and engaged our district's student body is. Now that AP testing is over, obviously, there is a lot of relief, but during the last two weeks, there was a large amount of stress surrounding these exams. If there could be a way to schedule them in order for students to not have two in a day, or if there is more of a break between them, it would benefit the student body greatly. However, there are college board requirements that we do have to work around, so if that is not possible with the schedule that College Board releases next year, it would still be greatly appreciated by the students if the school had other opportunities to relieve stress throughout this time, such as therapy dogs that have been implemented on various campuses throughout these last two weeks, other events such as luncheons, picnics, or barbecues that would allow students to have something to look forward to either before or after their tests when they're engaging in such academically and mentally draining activities. Additionally, teachers at the high school level, especially in the junior and senior grade levels, should be encouraged to assign less homework, less intensive projects, and hold less important tests as students are already very stressed and exhausted from the preparation for and work required during these long four-hour exams. Like I mentioned earlier, creating an environment where students are encouraged to succeed is inherent within our district, and I think that it's pretty clear that we have been working in a very positive direction with AP testing numbers at such high levels, and I'm sure that our scores will also indicate how motivated our student body is. At younger grade levels and even at the high school levels, there is CAS testing, but the issues with CAS testing vary from the younger grade levels to high school. Students at younger grade levels are often exhausted by these exams and should be rewarded or celebrated or given some sort of rest period after such intensive work, and this is often done on a teacher-to-teacher basis, but just in general on a school-wide level if this would be able to be implemented. I know that a lot of students would appreciate that. On the other hand, many high schoolers don't necessarily take them seriously enough, and it results to our schools not necessarily being shown in as positive of a light as they could be. Like I mentioned, our students are very academically driven. However, when it comes to these tests at the standardized level, oftentimes what happens is when they understand the ramifications for college aren't as severe as they would be for an SAT or a GPA or other sorts of activities along this line, they tend to not prioritize them as much as they could have, and they tend to not take them as seriously, which result to lower scores and don't necessarily show how talented our district really is. So while I don't necessarily have a solution that could work to combat both of these issues at the same time, since they are pretty different from a younger grade level to a higher grade level, I think that it is important that we keep this in mind as we continue to message with the student body, just changing that up on a grade-by-grade level basis so that we can get the highest results possible and really show to the world how strong our district really is. Additionally, with finals over this past month of school, they should be limited during the AP testing period, at least at the high school level, since it causes a large amount of stress to have both being conducted at the same time. I know many teachers are mindful of this, but just encouraging this on a district-wide level would be beneficial since not all teachers necessarily realize how many of their students are actually involved in these classes, with more and more becoming involved as the years progress. Additionally, like I mentioned earlier, there should be activities to promote wellness on campus during the access, break, lunch, or after-school periods, just in order to make sure that the students are running and functioning throughout these two weeks and enjoying themselves once all of it is over. Finally, as a result of some of these topics coming up, we did have an extensive discussion at our Student Senate meeting regarding the AP classes and classes throughout the year and the tests and expectations that are required in these classes. I think that it's really important to set the expectations straight before getting involved with some of these classes. I know that in recent years, we have began to indicate the time that is involved in some of these classes, and continuing to do that would be very important and greatly appreciated by the student body, just so that they can understand how much is involved on a week-by-week basis and what they need to do in order to succeed. Apart from that, I think another thing that could be beneficial would be to indicate some of the skills required in these classes so that students understand exactly what they are getting themselves into, since for some, two hours of reading may be much more difficult than two hours of math, for example. Additionally, one of the concerns for many students is the pacing of certain classes. Oftentimes, what happens is classes are not paced at an even pace throughout the year, and there is more work done to cram in the work towards the end of the year, sometimes for final exams before AP exams or before just whatever concludes the school year for any of those sorts of other classes. And we want to make sure that it is consistent throughout, so encouraging teachers to keep it at an even pace and not having some periods becoming much more stressed and compacted as compared to others would be much more beneficial, and it would also allow students to have a little bit more downtime and a review period before their finals, AP tests, or any other exams that show their progress throughout the year. Next, I wanted to discuss scheduling for the next school year. I know we had had this discussion at the start of this school year as well, but it would be beneficial if school schedules could be sent out a bit earlier prior to the start of the school year, just in case any students do want to make schedule changes, because they often do, and it may allow us to limit the lines in front of the counseling office and the pressure that is faced by just staff at the start of the year, and it'll allow students to purchase items in preparation for their classes prior to the first week of school. Additionally, I wanted to touch on some of the things we have published this year. We have worked to improve the child nutrition plan. I know at the start of the school year, we were really working to adapt to how many more students were coming in and receiving school lunches and participating in this. So it's been really great to see how we have expanded our services, how we have been able to keep up with the needs of the student body, and the steps that we are taking in order to improve not only over the next school year, but over the next several school years. We have also been working to select the next new Student Board Member for the 2022 to 2023 school year, and I look forward to working with them and helping them understand just exactly what's going on so they can pick up right where I left off and really work to expand upon some of the things that we have started this year, and I'm really excited to see how that works out. We also added the Students SRVUSD account and began to improve communication between the district's student body and officials and staff by informing them of actions taken not only at school board meetings, but just across the district and celebrating a lot of the things that our students are doing, and it's really looking a lot better within schools. And I look forward to just increasing the reach of our social media and really using it to our advantage, like Dr. Malloy had mentioned, just in order to make sure that every student and every parent even is informed about what is going on within the schools and can really make informed decisions based off of whatever is happening. Additionally, the Student Senate and our subcommittees have been hard at work. Our Social Equity Committee has been working to create an anti-bullying video campaign with PTA, and they will continue upon this initiative next school year. We started and completed a district-wide art contest, and the winners should be announced within the school bulletins, and the winner's art will also be hung up across all of the district's schools. Mental health, we have been working to raise awareness and promote the wellness center, and we even made a video for this earlier on during the school year, and we have been pretty successful within the mission, considering the amount of improvement we've had with the involvement that students have seen within just working with their wellness centers and being able to visit them whenever they desire. We've also been working to hold a preliminary Fishbowl Discussion, which we will start off at Montevista, and then we'll have a district-wide one next year, once we've really worked out through some of the initial kinks, that process, and I really look forward to having district officials, students, and staff involved at this meeting. And then our Increasing Student Voice Committee has been very hard at work. The participatory budgeting trial at Cal High was very successful. We have allocated money to add a seed library, new chairs, chargers, preserve student newspapers from past years, add books published by students into the school library, and even purchase more class sets for certain books. Additionally, they have been working to garner signatures for the AB 824 petition, which allows the County Board of Education to add a Student Board Member position, which would be pretty beneficial for the 2023 school year. So they have already garnered, I think, over 350 signatures, and they're looking for approximately 150 more, and this can be anybody at the high school level who can sign this petition. Finally, our in-person school committee was working on a schoology video, and I think that it's pretty safe to say that a lot of the issues that we had with schoology at the start of the year have really been improved throughout the year, and we've really seen a lot of improvement just among teacher use and student use, and it's really just become second nature at this point. Finally, next year, I think they plan to improve upon the backpack weight that students have, and they started discussing this with Dr. Malloy at the Student Senate meeting that he attended as well. I know middle schoolers were very passionate about this issue, but even at the high school level, we do look forward to having a bit lighter backpacks next school year. And then finally, I wanted to touch upon some goals for next year. Continuing to improve communication between the students and the district will always be one of our initiatives, and I think that we have really started to step in the right direction with that this school year. Having people come to more Student Senate meetings and communicate with the Student Board Member and with the Student Senators will be one of our initiatives, and we do plan to allow for public comment at these meetings, whether that'll be virtually or whether that'll be in person, and I look forward to that from students at the middle and high school levels. Like I said, we've made a lot of steps in the right direction, and I think we really just need to keep working on the initiatives that we have started and expand upon their reach next school year. We have some great ideas, and next year, we'll have a much greater amount of time to keep working upon those. I wanted to take one last opportunity to thank you all for allowing me to serve in this role for the past school year. I've really cherished every moment of it, from the public comments to all of the reports. I appreciate how much my opinion has been valued, especially as a high school senior among such distinguished and experienced officials. And finally, I'm grateful for the guidance and care that I've received from every member of this board and district staff over the past year. Thank you so much, and I'll make sure to visit as much as possible next school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ronnet, for your importance. I think what we're going to do is just move directly into 10.1, our first action item, consideration of approval of Resolution Number 74/2122 in appreciation of Student Board Member. I was going to read the resolution, I still am, but you know, in many ways, I don't have to, not to this audience today that just listened to your report, your presentation, your preparation, the amount of work that you've helped to create a foundation for this district is simply amazing. is, is simply amazing. The poise that you've brought, and, and most of all, the amplification of the student voice is what you've brought to this setting. And you've not done it alone. You've, you've employed others through the Student Senate and beyond at various school sites, not just your own, which is something that we were not seeing in the previous attempts that we've had with student representation on our board. And so it, it's just incredible to sit back and just listen to your presentation. I know I'm going to miss them tremendously, but I look forward to those who follow in your footsteps. But I'll tell you, they are big shoes to fill. I'd like to read this resolution and then bring it to the board for adoption. Whereas Ronit Bacha was selected as the first Student Board of Education member for San Ramon Valley Unified School District for the 2122 school year. And whereas during this time, Ronit Bacha has given extensive time, energy, and talent in representing the interests of the students of San Ramon Unified School District to the administration and the Board of Education. And whereas Ronit Bacha served on the Board of Education to inform the board and community of student activities, issues, and needs. And whereas, under his leadership, the SRVUSD Board of Education has accomplished much, including excellent representation for San Ramon Valley Unified students, creating an SRVUSD Student Senate, and communicating with students from elementary, middle, and high school leadership groups on issues such as the value of student leadership, equity, deep learning, and innovation, social well-being, exceptional student achievement, the importance of academic success, and other student concerns while modeling those attributes to his classmates and fellow student officers on campus. And whereas Ronit Bacha has made significant contributions as a student leader and has demonstrated outstanding leadership and strong character. And whereas Ronit Bacha has been a valued and important member of the Board of Education, serving diligently and faithfully. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District, recognize him for his service to the district and its students, and wish him success in his future educational endeavors. I'd like to start with a motion, so we can pass this resolution before continuing our conversation.
I'll move approval.
Aye, second.
The motion was made by Board Member Ordway and seconded by Board Member Clark. Roll call vote. Board Member Ordway?
Aye.
Board Member Clark?
Aye.
Board Member Brad?
Aye.
Board Member Hurd?
Aye.
Board Member Mince?
Absolutely, aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
In recognition, please. Just one more thing from me, and we'll hear from others. In recognition of your time and achievement, we do have a certificate that's great for hanging on your wall at college, so everyone will be impressed with you right from the start. Certificate of Achievement presented to Ronit Bacha for outstanding services as Student Board Member 2021-22, signed by Dr. Malloy and myself. Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep moving. One other thing I did want to mention is that in addition to that wonderful certificate, we are going to be putting up a plaque here in the school district office that will now list our student board members going forward, and you will be the first name on that list. And we look forward to that being here. We'll also be getting you an official copy of the resolution that you can share with your parents and friends and family. Board members, anyone like to make some additional comments?
No, I'll start first. I'm just so impressed with all your work. I mean, you put in total commitment, I mean, total commitment. And I think that if, if anyone's kind of wondering, you know, you guys keep talking about deep learning, what does that look like? It looks like every time Ronic comes, right, and do your, your report, because you're jumping right in and really doing more, I mean, more than I think is expected. So thank you so much for giving student voice, but also giving us information about what students need and want, and so we can actually make the best decisions for them.
Even before I was a board member, I've been in this district a long time as a parent leader, and I always wanted to see a student board member on this board. That was really important to me. When I thought about a student board member, I had no idea that somebody so amazing and so articulate and such a deep thinker would come to our board and bless us with the voice of all of our students in this district. You are that person. You so far exceeded anything that I could have thought of. And in many times, I feel like you are so articulate and so smart and such a deep thinker about all the issues that you've presented that you should be sitting here, and I should be sitting over there. But I, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. You have set a very high bar, and we will miss you terribly. And you, these are truly big shoes to fill. So good luck to you. I have no doubt that you will be successful in whatever your endeavors are after this. So thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I, I want to say, I know this is kind of accolades, but, you know, the contribution that you've made to this board has been, in my opinion, has been pivotal. I think that the work that you have done, the information that you have gathered and then presented to us and our community has made a difference in our decisions, has allowed our decisions to be more comprehensive, to be more well-thought-out, to have a better understanding of what is happening on the ground in the classroom with our students, the very people that we're here to serve. And so, I mean, you're awesome, and I appreciate you, and your future is so amazingly bright, and I'm a little bit jealous. So enjoy life.
I would just like to add that in addition to all the amazing things that have already been said, the substance you brought was something that really was missing and exceeded my expectations. And it's been really a delight to watch you grow in this position. I think about, you know, your very first report to then how it's evolved. And as one of you said, you brought such an important voice for the students. And I've been so impressed with how you have so diligently collected the input from other students. It was a real treat to get to watch the Student Senate meeting a few weeks ago and watch how you worked with the Student Senate Leader. Is she the speaker? I'm not sure. And then to serve most recently with Ken and Dr. Malloy and you and John Campopiano on the, the final interviews for your successor. The way you interacted even in that collaboration was so mature, so respectful, and just so really, to lose Laura's word, really awesome. And your future is so bright, and Penn is so lucky to have you. And I can't wait to hear what you do next, besides being a student, but what you do in terms of student leadership as you go through university. Congratulations, Ron.
And, and you do student things in your off time as well, right? Dr. Malloy?
Just very briefly, when I arrived here in 2020, students came to me and said, "We need a student board member." And I had come from a district that had a student board member, so I thought, okay, we can make this happen. And the board, of course, at the time, was very supportive of that, and we took care of the legal process required to be sure we covered all the bases and did everything right. I want to thank, from my office, Cindy Fisher, who was a direct connection to you. I wanted to thank John Campopiano and Tammy Castelluccio, who have done all kinds of work to support us, because what I shared with the students who came to see me that day was, there are a couple of conditions that are required in order for this to work. A student board member is not just themselves in the boardroom. They've got to be connected to a network. So that's where the whole Student Senate piece I referred to was so important. And then the Student Senate can't be a thing in and of itself. It has to be deeply connected to every student across 36 sites, which I know is where Student Senate wants to keep improving. So you set the bar high. You have been very committed, very dedicated, and very talented at this role, and I'm grateful, because what you've done is you have shown us how to do it well, so that we can take what we've learned only to get better. So I will just add my thanks personally to you, my absolute confidence that we're going to hear all kinds of amazing contributions you make everywhere that you go. All the best, and thank you so much for everything you've brought us here in San Ramon Valley.
Thank you one more time. Onto other things. 10.2 AG Completion Improvement Grant Program.
Sure. Thank you, trustees, and congratulations again, Ronit, for that huge accomplishment. Tonight, we're here to share our A to G completion grant improvement plan. It was established by Assembly Bill 130 for the purpose of providing districts the opportunity to provide California high school students with more opportunities to become A to G eligible. So tonight, we're going to talk through our plan and proposed plan in order to spend the $534,793 of one-time grant funding money that was used, is going to be used for this purpose. The funds must be spent by '25, '26 school year. And so we're going to take you through our proposed plan this evening. Excuse me. As you know, the A to G Success Grant was a grant that was put together to increase the number of California high school students who are A to G eligible, as we shared. A to G college entrance requirements are two of the requirements mentioned above. There are the sequence of classes in various subject areas that students must complete with a C minus or higher. And they're needed for students to be minimally eligible for UCs or CSU systems to be able to apply for those two schools. As I mentioned before, we're, we received $534,793 in one-time grant funding that we need to spend through '25, '26. And we want to talk about a few of the ways that we're going to spend that, those dollars and we plan to, to do for the next couple of years. First and foremost, we want to talk about the fact that these dollars tie directly back to our strategic directions, deep learning and equity. We wanted to share a little bit around the data. The percentage of students who are not currently eligible in the San Ramon Valley Unified School District from 2017 through 2021, excuse me. And you can see that percentage has relatively stayed around the 30% to 33% mark, showing that 33% of our kids are still not eligible for A to G. So tonight, we wanted to talk a little bit about how we would like to plan to spend the dollars that we received. And if you take a look up on the screen, one of the things we would like to do is expand access to A to G coursework. We really want to focus on ensuring that all our students can access A to G classes in order to do the harder classes that require more work. We want to improve our Tier One instruction in this area. We want to expand our opportunity for students to be able to recover classes with credit recovery after school, during the day, other opportunities than we offer right now. We really want to take the time to spend dollars in engaging our parents, the understanding the importance of the A to G completion early on, and knowing and understanding why that's important for parents and their students to know prior to going into high school. We want to enhance our current Avid program that we have at many of our school sites and focus on having a district lead that would support those efforts and potentially adding more sections of Avid across our high schools and middle schools. Most importantly, we also would like to focus on increasing our counseling support, having our counselors really hone in on the individual data at each of our high school sites that is directly impacting each of our high schools and that rate. Each of our high schools vary in terms of the completion rate, and we really want to take the time to provide professional development for our counselors and also the opportunity to dive into the data a little bit more over the course of the next couple of years, so that we can see what more we can do to support our students. So that is how we plan to spend the dollars. I have our Executive Director, John Campopiano, here tonight with me to any questions you might have around the plan.
Thank you. Board members?
I have a question about the, the data in the bar chart that was around 30% to 33%. Does that mean that that many students didn't complete the whole series in each of the A to G areas? So a student could be short two classes, and they're part of that three. It, I just think it's a really important thing about not eligible versus didn't complete the whole sequence.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Suzanne.
Yeah, I was actually struck by, because I know that our actually high school graduation rate is actually in the upper 90%. So I was a little bit taken aback to know that 30, well, this year, I guess, this last year, 33% of our students who are actually not UC or CSU eligible. So do you know why the 30% of us, why, why is that not? Is that kind of intentional, students don't want to be, you know, the UC?
Right.
Or is it something else?
Well, I think it's a number of factors. One being one of the factors that Trustee heard mentioned, that some students don't complete the requirements to meet the eligibility. I think also the graduation requirements are different versus the A to G requirements. So graduation requirements, students can essentially pass with a D or a D minus and above. And with the A to G requirements, you have to have a C minus or above. That's one of the criteria. Do you have anything to add to that that I may have missed in addition to those?
Yes, great. And, and also the math requirements, the UC/CSU math requirements are more like Ms. Huarto said. And so some of our students don't continue and take the Algebra II or Advanced Class after taking Algebra I and another class. So those are the main reasons we see. And like Trustee Hurd said, is you could have all of your courses in one D plus in one of the A to G courses, and you would not meet that eligibility criteria. So we want to do a dive into that with some of the learning loss that we have talked about in previous board meetings due to the pandemic and what we've done. That's why we attribute that increase, where we have seen some learning loss, some attendance that we're working on, all those things.
Thank you.
Reference to the Avid program, are the, do the teachers that teach that have to have a special credential or training? And do we have personnel in, in the district that would be able to expand that program now? Now, we have that in the middle school and the high school, yes. Do, do you want to speak to Avid a little bit?
And the, the training for Avid is extensive, so we do have many trained teachers. And if they are not trained, we put them through summer and year-long institutes. And we do have a willingness, the, the trick with our Avid program is having enough students in the Avid to run the Avid section. And so Avid has great data, great research behind improving the things that we're hoping. So we want to use this grant money to try to refocus on Avid, the communication, the publicity about it, the why take Avid, because some of our students or families may not want to take Avid, but once they understand what it is. So we're hoping that will be part of this.
And part of the work we want to expand is also to, if we think back to our strategic directions again and broadening the definition of success and understanding that there are multiple pathways that are important and realizing that it is a cost to the district when we need to run programs where we don't actually have the interest yet. That is something that I think, from a budget perspective, is also part of this discussion. We've got a head start with this grant, but depending upon what we learn, I'm hoping that it can inform future budget discussions related to expanding pathways and, and broadening that definition.
I think it would also be helpful if, as we work with this grant, kind of along the lines of what you were just saying about redefining success, is not only measuring this in, were they completely eligible or not? Because I think we would like to be furthering the academic success of all students. And if you just didn't make, for example, the foreign language one, okay, you didn't, you weren't completely A to G eligible, but I think it would be very enlightening for us to be tracking our project, our progress more minutely than that.
Part of the requirement for receiving the funding is that we do have to report out in December of 2023 to the state on the improvement that in December of 2023 to the state on the improvement that we did show with our students. So part of what we're doing is currently looking at with our counselors and talking with our curriculum department about how we're exactly going to measure that above and beyond just some of the local data we have.
Because I think a lot of that, we have to be careful about the messaging that it's sending to students. If we're totally focused on, hey, you're only successful if you can do this A to G, whereas they've got a different view of success. I mean, again, we want to provide opportunity for everybody, but we can't be saying there's only one path for success.
Laura, did you have something?
Yeah, I know in the past, we've seen data where there have been specific groups in our population that have been disproportionately achieved to a lesser degree. And when I see that 33%, I'm curious how that breaks down in terms of specific groups, and then I would ask how we are reaching out to those specific groups that are disproportionately underachieving.
And I'd like to, that is absolutely a great question, both those last two questions together in terms of how do we increase our A to G without allowing our students to feel their failures if they're not A to G, right? And there's another metric on the California Dashboard, the College of Career Readiness that we've showed in the past. And secondly, breaking down that 33 so we can use targeted interventions with the students, the parents, the teachers in tier one, all of that support, so we know which students aren't and why. Is it a math? Is it an early middle school thing? And that's what we want to dive into so that we can increase those numbers without also making someone feel that they're not successful. So I think that's a very nuanced question.
And if I can add, if we go back to the equity report, we actually did share the disproportionate data. So we do have students with special education needs, students who may be dealing with poverty, students who identify as Black African American, there may be some intersections there as well. That is why we're leaning into the equity commitment, because there is data here in San Ramon Valley that would suggest that we've got to do a better job of creating those conditions for the students. So part of that is through engagement, part of that is through the cultural proficiency work we're doing, part of that is through the equity work that we've already committed to that basically says that it's about creating the conditions for success for each and every student, providing the access to it, and not being afraid to confront anything that might be getting in the way of that, bias, barriers, and so forth. So that's part of our work. You'll just get to see it come forward again through our equity report, but it's something that each month, we're looking at the data to figure out how we're moving it all forward.
You know, at the same time, I would like us to look a little deeper into the reasons why we have certain number of students, a third of our students who are not A to G. All of the reasons that you've just talked about is something that hopefully this grant will help us move forward. I'm also interested in those students who are interested in a CTE pathway, for instance, who are not addressing as, maybe as well as we need to going forward.
So what I'm hearing?
Making sure that we have a sense of, okay, the goal is not to get to zero, right, or 100%. The goal is to find those student needs that address their particular, I think that's exactly what you're saying, you know, identifying success for each and every student, which may be on the A to G path, but may be a different path as well.
And President Mince, what I'm hearing is there's a difference between a student choosing not to be A to G success ready and someone who doesn't have access to it. Those are two different questions, and what I'm hearing the board say is, we need to be sure that when we report back, we actually have some clarity around that, which means that's the student voice piece again. We're not going to get that clarity unless we ask, because again, not every student may want that, and that's got to be okay. But every student who wants that, we've got to be sure that they are successful with the strategies and conditions we create.
I had a quick question about the percentages that were shown. I know we mentioned that students who receive Ds or Fs can be included in this. I know that there's opportunities to remediate courses when students do receive a D or an F in one of their classes. Is that factored into this, or is this prior to a remediation course, for example?
Thanks, and this is my chance to congratulate you for being a great trustee, and thank you. This data here shows students that are not eligible, so anyone in this group, for one reason or another, they had, didn't meet it or had a D. So one of the issues we're seeing, Trustee Batra, is that the student may take the courses to be eligible but not be succeeding. That's one thing Dr. Moye said, so we have to differentiate. So this data, as you can see, has stayed, and so we're hoping this grant will allow us to dive deeper and make those changes. But yes, there are remediation options, but often we're not seeing that change these numbers.
Can I piggyback on that question? So what, what are the remediation options? If a student gets a D plus in their, their second-year language class, do they have an option of remediating? Do they go outside the school district? Is that a summer offering? If they, and if they have a D plus in Algebra II, for example, are they, is there a spot for them, or is it only really for the Fs and the D minuses and then that kind of thing?
Trustee Brad, and that is another access question, that we continued, access to it. The students with Fs receive the priority because that gets them to the graduation number that trustee Ordway mentioned, that we were 97% graduation, and you can see the gap here. So we are not successfully remediating all the students with Ds, D pluses, whether it's for multiple reasons, access to the course, the student wanting or knowing about it, and that's part of this counseling engagement. Another shout out, we, we need to do this more often with our counseling teams, is giving them the support to identify the student, to provide that communication to the parent and the student, here are your remediation options. But the D, and we talk a lot about this, the D meets the need to graduate, but what is a D doing, right? There's obviously some concerns there. So we don't have full remediation, and that's part of our program to expand.
Anything else?
Can you give me an idea of when do you do the intervention? Like when in the, the process of high school, or when does, how would you identify? I'm imagining that probably teachers and their teachers would be giving you the information. We have the grades. When does that intervention start?
Well, ideally, it starts in the classroom, right, tier one. So that's, it's really relative to kind of how we're utilizing our MTSS coordinators down at the elementary and middle and high school levels. That's what they're doing right now. They're looking at the data, they're isolating who needs the help, they're going in and supporting the teachers at that first onset of instruction in the classroom to say, what are you identifying? Who in your room needs what? And then we build from there, obviously, up through tier one, tier two, tier three. But it really is enhancing, I think that the piece that we really want to stress is getting those counselors to be able to examine school-by-school data, which we don't have the capacity to do, that these dollars will allow us to do at a greater depth than we're doing right now, and having those conversations in a more isolated manner and really based on student need, who needs what in what class. So really, it's, it's first instruction, tier one, is where we should be starting.
The requested action on this is approval of the AG completion improvement grant plan, and we'll be seeing more in terms of changes going forward at the next meeting. But can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Heard. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Batra.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Heard.
Aye.
Board Member Mince.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, and thank you staff for all the work leading up to working with this grant opportunity. Item 10.3 is consideration of approval of new and revised position titles and salary range placement changes in certain classifications in the child nutrition department in the '22, '23 school year, and I'll bring this to Mr. Adnisky.
Thank you, President Mince. So as CSCEA President Tammy Castellucio mentioned during Association President's comments tonight, the district and CSCEA leadership have been engaged in ongoing discussions really since the close of negotiations in late February about the implementation of universal meals and the introduction and expansion of scratch cooking this year within the child nutrition operation of the district. And we've had some really healthy and rich discussions about needs within that department during which we reached mutual, kind of a mutual decision to make a number of changes for next year. Those changes include revisions to some existing position titles, which you've already seen and taken action on during the consent calendar, the introduction of new positions, classifications, and some enhanced and increased efforts to attract and retain employees within the district's child nutrition operations. In, in recognition of those needs, the district and CSCEA have collaborated and mutually agreed to revise three existing position titles and develop accompanying job descriptions for them, to develop three new position titles and job descriptions where those were needed, and to establish new and again, improved salary range placements for most of our child nutrition classifications. We believe and are optimistic that these measures will honor the work of our child nutrition department employees, will assist us in adequately staffing child nutrition operations to best serve students moving forward, and support the realization of what is now a new and re-energized vision for this critically important operation of the district. So with that, we are recommending this evening that the board approve the revisions to the position titles, the new position titles, and the salary range placements that are indicated in the attachment to this item for implementation effective July 1, 2022. This is in the process of being ratified by CSCEA, and we're expecting that that ratification will be completed sometime by the middle or end of next week. So we are recommending approval as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members' questions, comments? If not, can I have a motion?
I'll move approval. Second.
The motion was made by Board Member Heard and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote, Student Board Member Batra.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Heard.
Aye.
Board Member Mince.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
And Keith, thank you very much for all the work that your team as well as CSCEA's put into this. You know, we've been working on trying to get our nutrition services, you know, improved in so many different ways over the years, and, and the challenges we've had just the last couple of years have really helped point out where we can provide just a much better service. And we've already been starting to do that, and hopefully with these title changes and additional positions is going to help to continue that direction.
Thank you, President Mince. We appreciate that. And in the spirit of shared leadership, I want to give just a quick shout out and say that the leadership from the Human Resources Department that really brought this to fruition was done through our new classified director, Latonya Williams. She flew almost exclusively on her own in ongoing conversations with Zetta Riker and with CSCEA leadership and with the CSCEA bargaining team around this. So this was a first major endeavor of hers as our new director, and I want to acknowledge her for that as well.
Great, thanks for bringing that up. Moving on to item 10.4, consideration of approval of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan and Update on Universal Pre-Kindergarten Requirements. And this is Danny and Christine. Danny, you going to start it?
Yes, thank you very much. So this evening, we wanted to go over three different, yet overlapping things, and we'll get there in just a second. And I wanted to kick off first by talking about ELOP specifically. ELOP, the Extended Learning Opportunities Program, is a new legal requirement from the state. This is new law. It deals with the space of after-school care, and this is a space that is new to SRVUSD. This is not something that we've really dealt in directly in the past. We've had providers and vendors who have done this for us. The program requirements are very specific, and the state expectations are to provide an extended day with an explicit linkage to the school day. This is what districts are being tasked with this from the state and from CDE. The state has introduced a new legal mandate that as of now is not fully funded. We did not receive a lot of money to do this program, and we have to target at least 50% of our unduplicated students. That is a requirement. As you all know, the district went through an RFP process in the fall to select a vendor to help us implement Extended Learning Opportunities Program in our district, and now I'm going to hand this over to Assistant Superintendent Christine Huarto, who's going to walk us through the slides, which will summarize the board report.
Sure, thank you, Danny. So tonight, as Danny shared, we're going to talk about how we're going to implement the ELOP plan. But first and foremost, you see, and as Danny shared, there are three means by which the ELOP not only impacts, but also there's expectations for in each of these areas. So the first one, if you wouldn't mind clicking for me, Logan, thank you. As Danny stated, the three new requirements do intersect, but they are distinctly different. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we go through the slide deck. As we came to you earlier in the year, and we talked a lot about the TK expansion and the expectations that we will expand the TK eligibility over a three-year period, all four-year-olds becoming eligible for TK by '25, '26, ELOP plays into this in a portion of TK expansion, which is the next slide. Part of our TK expansion, and you'll hear more about this in the June meeting, is that we are tasked with a universal pre-K plan that we have to bring to the Board of Education, sharing with you basically how we plan on supporting our TK students not only with that expansion, but a plan that will offer them eligibility and access to at least a full day of learning if they choose to do so. Then we have ELOP. ELOP, which was a requirement mandated by the state, which asked us to take TK through six students, specifically unduplicated identified kids, and allow them access to an extended day, which includes our TK students. But the one caveat is TK is access, unduplicated is must be able to access. So our students who are non-unduplicated students would be able to access a full day if they choose to do so through the program we're about to talk about, or through some of our existing childcare providers if they choose to do so. So the vendor, as Danny spoke, we went through an RFP process, and we selected a vendor right at school, whose mission you can see above, is to really work with school districts in focusing on that extended day and providing the opportunity to have a consistent schedule that allows the students to access educational enrichment and intervention opportunities that are mimicked during their regular school day. This is a sample daily schedule that Right at School has provided us, and we've been obviously talking through with them. So as you can see, the first part of the day, again, students would be coming for the afternoon. So this is an extended day that carries on from 11:30 till 6:00 p.m. So our TK students would be able to access that from, from that time, and then our students who get out of school later in the day would be able to access to the 6 o'clock hour. They would begin with a community meeting and snack, kind of gathering, talking, regrouping, kind of talking about the day and the activities for the day. There's an organized fitness activity that ties directly to the standards and the things that the students are working on during the regular school day during physical education. Then we have our opportunity for academic enrichment, in which students will be able to explore, enhance, or remediate if necessary as well on certain areas of math and English language arts and writing. Then there's an opportunity for some social, emotional learning time. So this might be a time where students are meditating, students are participating in a whole group activity where they're sharing about, you know, their feelings and/or how schools impacted them for the day, many, many different SCL activities they've shared with us. And at the end of the day, there's a portion of the time for students to have some self-directed inquiry, which is really their opportunity to kind of seek out their passion within the program and to be able to explore and be adventurous around enhancing a topic that they're passionate about. So TK and kindergarten, we are actually going to have at five locations. So Greenbrook, Live Oak, Walt Disney Quail Run, and Monavadaale. As I shared, there would be after-school care until 6:00 p.m. Our unduplicated TK case students would be transported to that appropriate location, and depending on enrollment, we would open more sites if needed. So if we had more parents who became interested in the program, then we would look at expanding those sites. But for right now, we do need to, by state law, provide enough space and opportunity for unduplicated students. In grades one through six, we're going to have a program at all 22 elementary sites. Again, it will be open till 6:00 p.m., and our sixth-grade students will also be offered at select elementary straits. Right, right now, we're trying to determine which sixth graders are going to participate in the program because it is a smaller number of students, and then we're going to figure out the locations based on that enrollment and the number of unduplicated sixth graders that we have and where they reside. So the next steps, as you can see, we plan to communicate with our community tomorrow when registration opens. We are specifically targeting communication to families of unduplicated students, and then we'll be opening up to TK and the wider community to be able to register. You can see there's the opportunity for parents and families to attend informational sessions most of this week and next, if I'm looking at my dates right there. And also, we will have one of these sessions recorded, so parents will have the opportunity to find that on our website to be able to hear the session if they weren't able to make one of those informational sessions in person. if they weren't able to make one of those informational sessions in person. So with that, I have our Executive Director, myself, and Assistant Superintendent Hellman here to answer any questions on ELOP.
Thank you very much. I do have a speaker card on this, however, first, do board members have any questions for clarification? Go ahead, Rachel.
I have one, Christine. How does the AMPM aspect of TK and kindergarten figure into this? Would the kids who are participating in ELOP automatically be in a morning class?
We would absolutely have to do that, and we're working with our site principals on that. That would be a way to enable them to attend the after-school program that they're entitled to. Thanks.
So with TK unduplicated students, my understanding is that one of the ways that we find out about unduplicated students is through, you know, their financial, educational services, right, through financial. How does an incoming TK parent know that they potentially might have an unduplicated student? How are we outreach-ing for that?
I will let my TK expert come to the podium and answer that.
That's interesting. And sometimes at the enrollment, when students enroll, parents are asking about that. We work with our partners with it. Some of our children who will join us from our preschool, the county preschool, we already know that they have that ability, so we'll target those parents. And then looking at enrollment as well.
Also, at the parent information sessions, that's part of the information that our directors will go over. If parents are unsure, or they're not sure if they've done something to find out if they are eligible, we will be able to provide assistance to be able to navigate that process with them.
How many unduplicated students are we looking at?
I'm going to turn, but roughly a little bit over 1,400, I believe, at the January run when we did the numbers.
And what happens if we don't get enough?
That's what I was just going to ask.
So 700 apparently, approximately. What if we don't get that many students participating?
Great question. As of this moment, the way the law is written, if we do not serve 50%, so 1,400, 700, we would have a financial penalty, and we'd have to repay some of the money that they gave us back to the state.
Is the program fully funded for those students, those unduplicated students?
It is not fully funded. We received $900,000 to serve 1,400 students.
And what do you think the actual cost will be if we're serving at least 50% of our students?
At least 50? I don't have that one off the top of my head. I did the math for the worst-case scenario, which would be serving all of the students. I know that sounds weird, but from the finance guy, if you have to have more expenses, that's the worst-case scenario. If we had to serve all 1,400 students, or if we did, it would be about $3.5 million.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take our speaker card. Ann Tancioko.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Malloy, and District Administrators and Staff. My name is Ann Tancioko, the Executive Director for Kids Country, a nonprofit organization founded and initially funded by parents and local businesses and established with the support of San Ramon Valley Unified School District. Tonight, I come to share Kids Country's concerns regarding the execution of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. While we understand that the district is under extreme pressure to execute this mandated grant, what we don't understand is that there will now be two after-school programs on all elementary school campuses, enrolling from the same population. This puts Kids Country and other after-school providers in direct competition with the new ELOP chosen provider. This is an absolute threat to Kids Country's existence, a longtime partner of the school district. The addition of a non-licensed childcare provider is redundant. It ignores the existing system that we already have in the district, and it's going to cause confusion for children, parents, our schoolteachers, and obviously our employees. The pandemic has negatively impacted many businesses, and that includes Kids Country. Currently, our next school year enrollment is projected at 64% of pre-pandemic enrollment. We are already anticipating the loss of enrollment of ELOP-qualified students in support of the district and part of the mandated program. Now, we could lose more. We are still waiting on word for additional classrooms that we've requested from the district to enroll families off our waitlist, and we are facing a changed work environment, where many of our parents are still working remotely or in a hybrid work experience. The RFP process, which we did participate in in support of the school district, we wanted to be here for you, despite the financial hardship, because we do know there's not enough money, was not clear in the execution and implementation, as it was in search of a provider who can serve the unduplicated pupils. However, just recently, I've been told they can enroll from general population. The introduction of a for-profit corporation, a for-profit based in Illinois with no community ties wipes away the community-based relationships we have built and values we have shared for the past 37 years. We've always invested our dollars in this community, school gardens, shade structures, playgrounds, the facilities who welcome the children, childcare scholarships, including a principal's fund, PTA-sponsored events, ed foundations. So what is Kids Country asking for? Keep Kids Country and all other after-school providers as trusted partners. Keep us at the table to help do what's best for the children in this community. The pandemic almost killed us, but what I'm afraid now is that this decision is basically the catalyst to the demise of our organization, a San Ramon-born and bred nonprofit, community-based organization for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Board members, further comments?
Yeah. Can you explain the criteria that you use to choose this vendor for this particular the ELOP program?
I can look it up. I don't have it in front of me, and I was not on the RFP selection panel. But I do know that most RFPs, including this one, is about making sure that, in this case, it was about the program requirements that, as we know them from the state, and also the best value in order to implement that program or those requirements. So it was looking at all of that. There was a matrix that the people that were on the committee filled out, and I think there were four or maybe five responses to the RFP, and they were all evaluated on that same criteria.
So basically, you had a program that's been mandated by the state that tells you what the organization that is going to be implementing this needs to deliver, correct?
Slightly different. The state has told us, we have to do it. We can use a vendor to do it. But the state is requiring that the district make sure that it happens. So it could be a vendor that executes and implements. It could be using district staff could do it. But given the amount of money that they allocated to us, there is not enough funding to do it in-house with district staff.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, or will there be any opportunity for our existing daycare providers at school sites to work with Right to School to be able to, you know, because, I mean, I know as a parent that, you know, there are times and years and particular kids that need an extended day, but then there are kids that really just need a place to go to be able to hang out with their friends and play and be outside and be cared for. And so, you know, so a Kids Country and a YMCA kind of serves that needs, whereas a Right to School serves that need of curriculum, education, those types of things. So is there a way for the two? Has it been discussed, this idea of the two partnering, or?
We have had that conversation. I have had the conversation with each of the four providers independently to let them know what was coming, and that we don't really know what the future looks like because right now, as we speak, there are bills on the floor, the legislature, about changing and tweaking the ELOP program. Maybe they're going to give us some more flexibility. The governor's may revise it came out last week. His proposal now is he wants to fully fund ELOP a few years early, which would be $2,500 a student. That would be very beneficial. We're not ruling anything out. What we know is that as the law is written right now, we have to implement something next year. And so we're going to get it up and running. But that doesn't mean that our existing childcare providers are completely out of the mix or we're going to isolate them and have them not talk with Right at School or anything like that. Everything is on the table as far as possibilities at this point, but we have to get something going, and so we're going to do that. And we have to also make sure that the finances don't negatively impact the district beyond the money that the state gave us. So we don't know everything, but with what we do know, we feel that this is the best way to go through the next school year. And this does coincide with the traditional RFP process that we've gone through with our childcare providers to determine which sites they will be at. That is due next year. It's actually technically due a year ago, but it was in the middle of the pandemic, and we all agreed we were just going to keep things status quo until we could get back on our feet and try to give people time to answer that RFP for childcare. Now that the state has given us a whole new set of programs that we are responsible for, we may need to look at that RFP process and change that vehicle to providing essentially what is a tenant and landlord agreement with our childcare providers. Maybe we need to tweak it. Pardon me, maybe we need to rethink it because now the district is being forced into this extended-day after-school care space. We were never required to be in this space prior. So we've got some things to figure out, but as it stands right now, the plan that's in the agenda is one of those requirements. The state wants to know what we're thinking. This is what we're thinking as of now, but there's nothing off the table at this point about what the future looks like. This is for next school year.
And the contract's just for one year?
It's one year.
And if I can just add the last piece that Danny said and emphasize it. Because we have never been charged with being in this space, we have no structure. We have no staff. We have great partners, and we appreciate our partners like Kids Country, but we haven't engaged that way. So with very little notice, without the resources, we've been expected to deliver a 1,400-student program. And so basically, what we are asking of you is, well, we brought it to you earlier. This isn't the first time you're seeing it, of course. There was a, we brought this to you for your approval. We basically cannot facilitate this without this year of having this arrangement. And as Danny said, we are open to our partners. Nothing is in stone. We don't know how it might shift yet again, and we'll just stay as close as we can to it. But I think that framing, Danny, that you shared at the last part of what you're saying, I just wanted to emphasize that. And if we are being expected to move into this leadership space, and it looks like we're going to need to be there with our partners, then we come back to you and we talk about appropriate staffing to oversee that work, which, as I said right now, does not exist on our district team at all.
I just want to see, it's all about programming, right, that ELOP. So it's programming, and it's also after-school programming. So it's possible, right, from what I saw in the packet, that the sample schedule and stuff. Let's say I'm a parent, because that's actually for TKK, who are four, five-year-olds, that schedule programming is actually pretty heavy from 8:30 to 6:00. So I'm, and again, this is not, parents are not required, right? Like, they can choose. So if I'm a parent who, depending on my schedule, can I work at, like, go to my preschool, drop my child off, not at 8:30 because I need to be at work by 8:00 or something? Drop him off at 6:30, 7:00? And then, and then they go through the school and, you know, the programming, and then pick him up at 4:30, 5:00 to Right to School. So can we kind of work with our partners, different partners in that way?
Yes, so there are requirements through ELOP that we offer access to an extended day, and that unduplicated students are being invited to participate in that. There currently, and quote me if I'm wrong, Danny, there's no attendance requirements. However, we have to provide that access. Right now, we're providing that access from 11:30 till 6:00 p.m. Now, a parent could choose to come early and pick up. A parent might choose to use one of our childcare providers for morning care because that will not be part of Right at School. They are merely an after-school from 11:30 to 6:00 program. So there's some choice in that to answer your question. And parents would be able, according to ELOP, if they wanted to pick them up sooner, they could. However, we would not want to, I think we would want to encourage our students to be there for the full portion of the day. However, that is the parent choice at that point, if they wanted to come sooner.
Okay, thank you.
One of the questions I have is, I understand that the school sites, but the actual facilities that are going to be used by the program, if you can get into that a little bit?
So we had Carol Loughlin, actually retired administrator, who you may remember that name, come out of retirement and help us part-time. And she went and met with every single elementary principal and went over space allocation for next year based upon the principal's and HR's knowledge of staffing at this moment. So how many TK classes? How many K classes? How many staff do you have now, and how many, and will that change for next year? And so we are able to accommodate having Right at School with a space on campus while not using or taking anything away from our existing childcare providers. And as Ann mentioned in her public comment, Kids Country has asked for some additional spaces at certain campuses because they have a waitlist, and we're trying to honor that, too. We're in the process of finalizing the list of rooms that principals think they need to pull off their staffing for next year in their program. We know what Right at School needs, and then we'll be able to make, and give answers for those. So depending upon the site, it's going to be a different answer because some sites are already pretty full, like a Golden View as an example. Or another site could be very different, like a Bella Vista, they have more space. So it is a site-specific answer, but we've gone through the whole list, and we're in the process of finalizing it now. We should have it done by this week.
Follow-up to my question, thank you, has to do with, you know, after-school liability on our school sites. At 3 o'clock, at least in a number of our school sites, they become open to the public as neighborhood parks. How do we assure that, you know, who takes responsibility for our kids? Not when they're in a classroom, but if they are on some form of ELOP recess, for instance?
Well, the Right at School staff would, just like our partners do with our childcare. They're responsible for making sure that the students who are supposed to come on that day are accounted for. They make sure that they take attendance to make sure that they are there, and if they're not, they're contacting parents. So at that point, the vendor would take over, just as our daycare providers do when students are transported. Or, you know, there's multiple ways on how they get to, you know, childcare and how they would get to Right at School, but they would absolutely be accounted for the same way they are now.
Okay, I'm thinking in terms of how do we balance the availability of, like, the playground if we have multiple providers on the same site after school?
Yeah, that's part of what-
Not mixing kids and that type of thing.
That's what, part of what Carol Loughlin is doing. And so with each principal, they've gone through the logistical plan of what that will look like next year so that if there are any questions, we get it all ironed out now before school starts in the fall.
Other questions, Laura? It looked like you had your hand.
Is there a minimum number of students per school site that Right at School needs to have enrolled?
Not necessarily. There's no programmatic minimum. There's a minimum that we would like to try to have because it will help with keeping costs down. But other than that, there isn't a programmatic requirement from the state.
And if I can just add, that's the reason why this is so difficult. Because the program costs multi-millions that we didn't receive, that's why when we were doing this work and realizing that until we know where the budget at the state level is going to land, we don't have those dollars, period. So that's why where we don't receive a certain number, then unfortunately, it does become our budget that must make up that difference. And that's the piece that we can't give you an exact number, which is why we didn't put it down on budget implication because we don't know. So we're just going to have to stay in close touch with you about how many students are coming, how many students are, families are paying, how many students are part of the unduplicated, and what that financial impact is going to be. So it boils down to, again, we are expected to do something in a certain timeframe with limited resources and without, in this district, a budget to cover it.
I had a question, Ken.
Yeah, please.
With regard to an RFP process, when the district decides we can't, we don't have the staff to do this ourselves, and they choose to do an RFP, the RFP has to be open to anyone, right? And then there's a process for how you have to evaluate them with a rubric. So it's not like we could have just said when we were going out, only engaging with our current partners, right? Legally, we have to open it up.
Correct. I mean, if you put out a request for proposals, you need to accept proposals from anyone that puts one in. And that's why they're advertised for a certain amount of time prior. That's why you follow a rubric, you establish a rubric. It's a best practice because then there should be fewer, if any, complaints about the process or favoritism or anything. because then there should be fewer, if any, complaints about the process or favoritism or anything like that. But the idea is that there's a rubric and a score sheet in some cases. And I remember that this district did a very large, a score sheet and rubric for when we did the solar projects, as an example, just another one from the past. So this is a process we do quite frequently whenever we want to pick the best, the best vendor to do something that we need done. And it helps us have an established process. It also helps communicate to the community why the particular vendor was selected. All of those things come together and it's, the vehicle is the RFP process.
Right. And I just, I guess I think, felt like it was important to clarify that because we value our current childcare partners, but this is actually a different animal that is being bid on, but that it had to be open to anyone to bid on.
If there's no other questions or comments, the recommendation was to seek approval for the extended or expanded learning opportunities program plan for 2022, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Brat. We'll call that student Board Member Bacha.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Next agenda item is, off of the consent calendar, it was item 12.6, now 10.5, in action, a view of textbooks.
Sure, absolutely. Item, which is now 10.5, is a preview of textbooks. And the, we're bringing forth textbooks to be adopted beginning, following the adoption. I'm going to bring up Hong Nguyen, who took us through the process to kind of take a look at all these elementary read-aloud books.
Hi, thank you. So on the actual preview for textbooks, 58 books. 57 of them were brought forth by a team of teachers that actually came together to look at diversifying our curriculum and really looking at elementary read-alouds. One of our strategic directions is to look at our goals to create learning environments that are safe, equitable, and provide a sense of belonging for all students and staff. And really, when we're looking at these books, we want to make sure that we are ensuring that we're meeting that goal. And then also developing teaching and learning experiences that are responsive to and supportive of diverse cultures and identities. And so really focusing on that from our strategic goals for equity. Really, for our group that came together, we have about 15-plus staff members. And the purpose was to empower students to see themselves in the curriculum because we know that that is super important and to be open-minded and accepting of all people. And so when we came together, there were a few different goals that we were looking at. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at books to provide feedback and guidance on diverse read-alouds for elementary schools. We also want to make sure that the books were age-appropriate, and that was something that we wanted to make sure as we went through, had discussion, and really look at these books, that that was, in order for us to recommend it to the board. And also to enhance the read-alouds, that we have a list of books that are here in the district. And as we look at the books, some of the books may be a little bit outdated, but we also know that we need to diversify that because the students are letting us know that they're not seeing themselves in the text that they're reading. And so those are a number of different things that we are looking at. When we do review the books, we are looking at Common Core study standards and making sure that we're meeting them. So whether it's for reading, for math, or for ELA, or social studies, any of those different standards, we're looking at that. So for our diverse read-alouds, of course, we're looking at our ELA standards and within that also our social studies. And so, you know, if you're pulling a book that is there, let's say, for example, Alma and How She Got Her Name. Of course, it's on identity, but then it's also teaching students about storytelling and beginning, middle, and narrative. And so it is put into the classroom through our units of studies, through Readers and Writers Workshop, and it could be utilized in that way. Of course, these books are supplements, right? We have our Readers and Writers Workshop where our mentor texts are ready that's within them. But we also know that in order for us to diversify our texts, we need to bring in other books that are going to support the curriculum that we actually have. And so also, along with that, we have our strategic goals that we want to make sure that we're meeting. We also have the Fair Act, where in the Fair Act, it does mention that we want to make sure that we have inclusion of contributions of various groups in the history of California and also the United States. And we want to make sure that we're including groups of men and women and numerous ethnic groups and expanded. And now we actually have more that's included within that. The study and role and contribution of men and women, Native Americans, African-Americans, Mexicans, Americans, Asian-Americans, Pacific Islanders, European-Americans, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Americans, persons with disabilities, and members of other ethnic and cultural groups. And so all of those different things, we are making sure that we're embedding within the diverse read-alouds that we have. We also have the diverse read-alouds tied to our resolutions that we have. We have 10 resolutions that are there, and the books do align under those resolutions to really help to diversify our texts even more. We want our teachers to be able to pull from a list that we're providing for them. Of course, there may be books that they want to read in the classroom that's going to align with the state's standards. But we also, as a district, want to be able to provide books for teachers. If they're saying, hey, I want to read a book for Pride Month, what can I read to my students? Or I want to read a book for Asian Pacific Heritage Month, what can I read to my students? And so we're trying to provide a way and an avenue for our teachers to be able to read age-appropriate books.
Han, thank you very much for that presentation. I know we weren't planning to ask you for that. However, we do have a couple of folks who asked us to pull this agenda item from consent. So I'd like to go ahead and give them an opportunity to speak, and then we'll bring it back to the board. First is Mike Arata.
Many of the 57 read-aloud picture books proposed now for June 7th adoption are innocuous by themselves individually. Noticeable, however, is a balkanizing theme, a division of America into separate ethnicities. Collectively, the books invert America's motto to become from one, many, the Al Gore version. None of the books appear to have Christian themes or to celebrate America's extraordinary history, but five of the books have Muslim themes, for example. And since this is SRVUSD, a central criteria for read-aloud storybooks include homosexualism and psychotic gender-bender confusion, even for very young listeners. Eight or nine such books are intended now, seven of them shown on this sign. The books drive a general desensitizing of young children. The neither book's main character, for example, is neither a blue rabbit nor a yellow bird, but a green in between. Corby Saunders calls it a book about gender. She recommends another book entitled Red, a crayon's story, to provide what she calls transgender representation. It's about a red crayon that decides it's really blue. Other crayons reinforce that belief, reinforce that belief. And likewise, a spork is a double-identity hybrid of spoon and fork. These all drive the district's not-so-subtle introduction to what district activists call non-binary or gender-fluid identities. The books go on from there to celebrate same-sex marriage, then to cross-dressing, thence to explicit transgenderism and homosexual activism. Jacob's New Dress is about a quote-unquote "gender-creative little boy" teaching us how to move between and beyond two boxes, boy or girl. So says Diane Aaron Saft, a gender-spectrum lecturer. Julian is a Mermaid is another story about a young cross-dresser. His grandmother helps him dress as a flamboyant female in mermaid costume. I Am Jazz glorifies Jazz Jennings, a male who says he's female. In real life, Jennings has had four problematic genital alteration surgeries so far. Unsurprisingly, the book's author helps schools conduct LGBTQ programs. Pride lionizes Harvey Milk as a homosexual hero. In fact, he was a pederast and statutory rapist. As Milk's friend and biographer Randy Schultz reported in The Mayor of Castro Street, Milk sodomized a 16-year-old addict runaway, Jack McKinley, and McKinley wasn't the only one. As Schultz observed, quote-unquote, "Harvey always had a penchant for young waifs with substance abuse problems." Shame on you for your own determined classroom and club sexualization of young children and outrage which has accelerated since the arrival of Mr. Malloy. Shame also on holding up Michael, rather, Harvey Milk as a hero.
Our other speaker is Alisa Tinker.
I want to thank the board for your service to our kids. My name is Alisa Tinker. I use the pronouns she, her, hers. And I am a board member of the Danville-Sandrum Valley Chapter of PFLAG. I am a proud mom of a transgender child who identifies as non-binary. They are an alumni of our district, and they were showing their gender as early as three, before preschool, before they could read any books. They weren't hearing or learning about how to be trans at home, as none of us knew about transgender identities at that time. Seeing books back then in their elementary school with examples of gender identities would have helped us, and frankly, their classmates, understand much sooner what my child was experiencing. Thankfully, my child had a very positive experience in our district, and I'm very grateful for that. For the benefit of the mental health and safety of all students of every race, religion, physical ability, gender, identity, and sexual orientation, they need to see themselves represented in their school's literature and curriculum. Knowing they are seen, respected, and safe promotes healthier individuals and community. I want to thank you for your support.
Thank you. Board members, back to you.
I think we had a, we have a question from the gentleman.
Yeah. You in front row, you're, something you had to ask about this? Can you go to the podium if you do? If not?
The question, the question that was asked was, how do we determine age-appropriate, I believe?
I guess your commitment, Dr. Malloy, to making it age-appropriate, what is the objective criteria? I heard Doc Han mention a lot of subjective terms. Is there any statistical objective backing to what is age-appropriate? Because I think there's probably some disagreements, even if most people are afraid to come and speak them on the other side of this topic.
So we can, why don't you explain kind of the two processes? One, using the common sense media approach, and the other, using the team. Thank you.
Yeah, so we had books that were looked at, of course, using common sense media. So that's something that we use in terms of just looking at the ratings of certain books that are online. There are some books that are not on common sense media, and so of course, are really working with our team and our committee, really looking at age-appropriateness of the books and making sure that they're meeting standards. And so we have certain guidelines that we want to make sure that we go through, and so in meeting those guidelines, it's part of filling out the actual form for the board adoption piece. And so we're going through a preview process right now, and so the books will be available in Building D at our district office. We're viewing during this time.
And I think it's important to add that there obviously is always a continuum of perspectives. It's not an either-or situation. By bringing a larger group of educators together to assist with the process when there isn't another type of objective, for lack of a better term, tool, is a way that we do checks and balances. One of the things that we as educators spend a lot of time thinking about, and I know there may be a belief sometimes reported in this boardroom, that we have all of these educators who might only be on one political perspective. That is not true. In the Sanremo Valley Unified School District, we do not have one political perspective amongst our educators. And we invite, in this case, 20-some to come together to have those discussions. And that's the professional judgment that we expect them to bring. But it's not just the books themselves. It's how the books are used. And that's never being depicted in these conversations because this isn't the forum for us to be able to do that. However, the appropriate forum to do that is for any parent or community member to connect with the staff at school and ask the question, how is this being used? But not in a way that will engender that division we've been speaking about, but more engendering the understanding that I think is most important. So we do have a district process. We do bring texts to the board for approval. Previously, our board policy has not demanded that we bring texts forward if they're smaller in number. But in this case, we decided to bring them forward, even though our policy tonight doesn't demand it in light of some of the concerns we've heard from our community. So all the texts that you're seeing tonight with read-alouds, our policy doesn't expect board approval when it's a smaller number of books purchased in a school, but we wanted it here. So it's, everybody can see it and everybody can understand it. There's nothing being hidden. There's a desire to connect and explain, to get off the divisions where possible, but for the most part, that's going to happen at school. So for example, I was out at four schools yesterday and last week, and I've asked the question, how are you engaging parents in this conversation? And in every one of those situations, each context, 36 sites, they're very different schools in our district. The principal was able to articulate to me how they're doing that. If there's a belief that that's not happening enough, I would ask that we go, that community members go to the principal first because that's only right and fair. If it's still believed that there is not enough happening for parents, we have a supervisor at the district office attached to each school, and we would certainly expect a phone call that we could follow up on. Our goal is to be sure that we are facilitating discussions, bringing about understanding, getting off the division because our kids have said to us clearly, they need it. And we've got all kinds of examples I can share at another time since it's 9:30 at night. But that is kind of, that is the approach we take. That is how the checks and balances work. And our commitment is to keep the discussion going and to stay off, as I said, an either-or proposition because that's not going to get us anywhere.
Okay, we're not going to get into a debate or discussion on it.
Can I, can I ask?
I would suspect that parents are involved.
I'm sorry. Can I, can I ask a question just to get some, gain some context? So do you have, it's probably a number you may not be able to pull out, but do you have an approximate number of how many different read-aloud books we have in our school district that our, that our teachers use?
I definitely know we have tons, right, of read-alouds.
We could say thousands, we could say, yeah. Okay. And how many books are on this list?
There's only 58.
58, okay. And my understanding of the purpose of adding these books into that list of read-aloud options for each individual teacher in their individual classroom for their specific cohort of students is to fill in gaps in diversity and inclusion that did not exist. So I, again, I hearken back to my days in the 1900s when I was in school. And it was, you know, most of the read-aloud books were very, I mean, it was, you know, a husband, a wife, you know, they were oftentimes white, they oftentimes lived in the suburbs. They had, you know, three kids and a white picket fence. This is an opportunity to allow for books in that, to fill in those gaps so that there are books that show my neighbor's kids, the family that lives next to me, my brother who lives in an urban area and has, and is divorced, right? It allows for this, a family that has two dads, those things, correct? It's not necessarily read-aloud books. Are they, are they meant to, are they meant to tell story and show narrative around real-world experiences? Or are they meant to teach a first grader what the difference between being, I don't, identifying as a gay person versus identifying as a straight person, for example?
Yeah, definitely for the books that we actually have, we want to be able to have students see themselves within the readings that are there. We want to be able to create diverse read-alouds for our students because we know that a lot of our readings within the classroom may not be as diverse. It's not bringing in specific ethnicities. It's not recognizing national or identities that are around them. And so we want to be able to bring in these books so that students are seeing themselves in the books, or they also are seeing different representations of our society. So that way, they are, when they're looking at characters and looking at respect, they're able to still respect others that are different from them.
I think if I can add, it's not a first grader being taught something as much as, and the question was asked, and I know we're not supposed to do that, but I think it's important, so if you'll give me an indulgence. Kids may not ask about someone being gay, but they are going to talk about their experience. And what we have in Sanremo Valley Unified School District is kids with different experiences than sometimes how we speak. So they may not ask about someone being gay or not, but they may talk about someone in their family who might be married to someone of the same sex. They will do that in first grade in our schools. And the teachers need to be supported on how to manage that. And I will say, i- in the candid way I do, some of our educators are really stressed by this, because they don't want their families upset with them. So there's a rock and a hard place going on. First graders are sharing their experience. Sometimes their experience is outside some of the norm boxes we might create, and it's our job to figure out how to meet them there. And ensure that our communities, our, our resources and our learning opportunities are reflective. So, so again, I think these conversations are harder to have in this room, but we're supporting our principals to have these conversations in their community. And that's why I'm not trying to take it away from the board, I'm just trying to say, it's kind of hard to have this dialogue here when it's about real circumstances, not, nor, there's not a global way of talking about this. Each classroom is made up of 20, 30 kids with diverse experiences, and we have an expectation that a teacher is going to meet each and every student. That is our expectation, and that's a pretty challenging expectation, and it's our job to provide tools and supports for that.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I add actually a, a personal, real personal experience in this that might actually a little bit give you, the gentleman, a little bit of perspective of, yes, actually, first graders, kindergartners, second, second graders do, maybe not like, say, I need this, but my daughter, when she was, yeah, I think in first grade, she loved Cinderella, the story, Cinderella. But Cinderella is always white, right? She's not, I mean, she is half, she's mixed. So she was, she, I, I didn't have anything to do with it, I took her to the library, public library, school library, that's all, you know, I did. She went, because she loved the story so much, she went to find herself an Asian, a Chinese Cinderella. She did. And because of that, and, and, and of course, the story is not exactly like the, you know, the Cinderella story we know. It taught her a little bit about different, right, the difference in cultures and stuff like that. She loved it so much that she went from that on, every time she'd go to the library, I'm like trying to introduce other books to her, she went, she found a Mexican Cinderella, she found a, I think, Irish Cinderella, she had found different, different Cinderellas. And so I think this is kind of what we're hoping to provide to us kids, because yes, she didn't come and say, I, you know, mama, I need to learn about all these different, you know, different people. She just loved the story, but she wanted to see herself, and then she, she's like, I love the story, so I'm going to find different ones. And, and in the process, she learned about the different cultures and their stories, like you, Hong was saying. So that really happened with my daughter, and we still kind of tease her, like, you remember when you were little, and every time we went to the library, you try and find, like, a different international type of Cinderella? So that, that's my, just kind of want to share my, my real experience with my daughter.
Thank you. Other comments? Rachel?
I just wanted to amplify or reiterate what Hong was talking about, with this whole concept of diversifying the curriculum was a major theme coming from students and parents on our Equity Steering Committee, but even more importantly, from the Culture and Climate Committee. And when we put out, we were preparing a survey, and then that kind of got put on hold, the people who had worked on this were really vested in it, and it was the, probably the most student engagement I'd ever seen on that committee, because these kids were passionate about wanting to see these other cultures, religions. I don't know if you want to call it lifestyle or preferences or whatever, but they wanted to see themselves, their families, and their peers in what they were studying. This isn't a politicized agenda with a bunch of adults forcing things on kids. It's coming from kids, it's coming from their parents who are having to, having to, getting to deal with the needs of their students, and this is meant to help. I mean, it comes up in PTA all the time, I mean, our, our community is craving this, and all I can say is if you're concerned about this, go take advantage of, of previewing the books. Open them up, look at the art, read them, look at them through the lens of whichever grade they're appropriate for, rather than just going online and looking at what, whatever reviews of them are. They're children's literature, and that's their intent, is to teach acceptance and understanding and empathy. It is through stories like these that we learn empathy for each other. We don't have to go buy into all of it if we don't want to, but it creates understanding of the human condition, and that's the point.
No, not at this point, sorry. You had your opportunity to speak. Board members, any other comments or questions? If not, can I have a motion?
I move approval of, of the list of books to be previewed.
I second.
The motion was made by board member, member Hurd and seconded by board member Clark. Roll call vote. Student board member Bacha?
Aye.
Board member Ordway?
Aye.
Board member Clark?
Aye.
Board member Brat?
Aye.
Board member Hurd?
Aye.
Board member Mince?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 11.0 is informational items. We have one item on our agenda this evening, first reading of revisions to board policy and administrative regulations 0420, school plan slash site council.
Thank you, President Mince. Tonight, we're bringing forward the first reading of the revisions to board policy and admin regulation 0420. It reflects the recommendation of the admin to remove the requirement of having all sites complete a school plan for student achievement, known as SIPSA. The SIPSA process and accompanying documentation is only required by the state if a site is receiving a very specific type of funding. SRVUSD only has one site that receives this funding, and it's Del Amigo. The district is recommending that all of our sites continue to engage in a regular process of continuous improvement, where results are documented over time and shared with the board and community. However, we are recommending that we do not follow the strict parameters presented in the SIPSA, and instead, we are developing a process that is more suited to our needs that continued to support the direction, our strategic directions. So the admin would like for you to take a look at the revisions that we made to 0420, and final approvals will obviously come forward in July. We'd like to have you take a look at that and see if you, excuse me, June, June, not July, to see if you have any recommended revisions to what we've changed.
So Christine, just to be clear, the changes that we're seeing are basically where it says, in order for a school to participate, has been changed to when required for participation. That occurred in several spots.
Yes, so basically we're-
Are there general changes in?
Sure, no, there are not. So what we're trying to say is when there's a school that participates in a specific funding program, like Del Amigo, which receives CSI funding, which does require a SIPSA plan, that's where we would and when we would require this participation. Otherwise, we're in the process of developing a continuous improvement plan with our school principals that we feel is going to be more aligned to our school directions and our strategic directions, and really allow our principals to dig deep into their individualized data and the goals that they have at their own school community.
Thank you. Board members, this is an informational item, so if you have any other questions of clarification or adjustments that you'd like to see, this would be the time to bring it forward, and then come back to us for final approval at the next quarter. Anyone have anything? Okay, staff, you've gotten your direction.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to item 13.0, administrative matters, 13.1, board member reports. Ronnet, we'll start with you. Do you have anything else you wanted to bring forward this evening?
I was able to attend the North Coast section championship game for lacrosse. California High School was playing in that game against De La Salle. We unfortunately lost to De La Salle in the quarterfinals, but they did end up winning it all, so I guess it evens out at the end. Spring sports are still continuing. I do plan to attend some of the playoff baseball games at the high school level. Hopefully, some of the SRVUSD high schools are able to play one another. It's always exciting when that happens, and I think most other sports are pretty much already done. Yesterday, as you know, I attended the Student Senate Meeting, but I was also able to hop into an educational roundtable discussion with Rebecca Bauer-Kahan. I believe board member Mince and Dr. Malloy were there as well, and I did log off early just for the Student Senate Meeting. Apart from that, finished up my AP tests, looking forward to graduation, and just excited to spend my last board meeting with everybody here. So thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Okay, so happy you got to attend several student or school events, right? So it started off, I think, a couple weeks ago with the International Fair at Neil Armstrong. Rachel was there too. It was, I think Neil Armstrong was actually the, the school site, right, that actually kind of started all these multicultural or international fairs and stuff. And usually it's inside, but this year they brought outside, and there were 15 booths of all different types of cultures and countries, and it was a lot of fun. And, and they offer, you know, food that's supposed to be a little sample, but some, sometimes you got a lot, so that was, that was a lot of fun. Also, attended Festival of the Arts at Doherty Valley. You know, art's my passion, so art appreciation, I, I don't do art, but, but amazing, amazing talents from our high school students on 3D and 2D art, and, and computer art. It was amazing. Attended our last LCAP meeting in person, so that was, that was cool. It was a smaller group than usual. I think everyone is so busy around this time of the year, but had really good discussions on, on our LCAP plan. And then, of course, yes, attended Day of the Teacher. I think all of us did the Day of the Teacher celebration that was coordinated by SERVIYA. And, and I was able to attend the Education Foundation's last board meeting yesterday night, and I really want to thank them, because I know the district, you know, provides summer school for our students who really need, again, we're talking about remediation and kind of support and things like that, and they help us offer our students enrichment programs. So more fun stuff. And so really thank them and affiliates, because that's parent, all parent, yeah, donations and so forth, so that's all from me.
So I think all of us attended the celebration with the San Ramon Valley Ed Foundation, their fundraiser at Diablo Country Club, and that was just really, a really great event, because it's amazing to see how many people in our community support our schools and the foundation, and they have no kids in school. So they were able to raise some significant funds that day that go to benefit all of our students. So I want to thank them and all of the community members who contributed to the foundation and vis a vis our district for their support. We also, all of us, I think, were also at the Celebration of the Teacher, which was put on by SERVIYA last Friday, where we all got together and were able to socialize a little bit and have some, some time right before the end of the year to check in with each other, and it was a really nice event, very informal and, and relaxed, and I just appreciated the time and all the people that were there. And looking forward to a busy week this week with the PTA breakfast and the May revised meetings and the Ethnic Studies Symposium and the Discovery Center benefit, and that all happens in one day. So it's going to be a busy Thursday, but I'm, I'm happy to be here, so thanks.
So Rachel and I did a Raise the Base presentation, and I have two scheduled for tomorrow with PTA meetings with Golden View and Stone Valley. And I just wanted to mention with that, that, so as, as been mentioned, the Governor's May Revise came out, and, and that does have some additional funding for the base, which, which we really appreciate. That's, that's not final, that's nothing in the books. What happens now is that, that the Governor's budget now goes to the, the Assembly and the Senate, and then they kind of argue and fight and decide. So there's still advocacy that could be done and that should be done to ensure that we, that, that our elected officials understand that, that we as a district really need that base to increase, to be able to, to keep our counselors in our elementary schools, to, you know, to provide some of those basic services that we've been fortunate enough to provide recently because of one-time funds. So I wanted to mention that. It's not over yet, so even though some people, because, so specifically, one of the bills that we had been pushing, AB 1614, never made it into committee, but with the Governor's May Revise and additional legislation that's on the table and in committee, that still is, there's still a lot of opportunity for us to be able to help, help to persuade the state to provide more money for the base. And then I also went to the, the Ed Fund fundraiser, that was great. We had a, I think, I guess Ken and I and, and Dr. Malloy were at a Town of Danville, City of San Ramon, and SRVUSD liaison meeting, and that went well, and we just kind of, it was an opportunity, again, for that shared leadership and, and each of us to talk about what's happening and coordinate and make sure that, 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 that we're supporting each other and we understand what's happening within each of our purviews. And then I also got to enjoy a lot of the arts that are happening around in the community, and went to dance recitals at San Ramon Valley, and then they kind of threw the gauntlet down and told me I had to, or Montevista threw the gauntlet down and said, you come to Montevista, because we're better and they're the competition, and both were amazing, and it was, it was a joy to, to see, and I, I've decided that in the fall, I'm going to do San Ramon, and in the, the spring, I'm going to do Danville, to do all the dance, hit all the dance programs. Went to the, the Doherty Valley Festival of the Arts, that was, that was wonderful. And the, the amount of student engagement at that festival, it was really nice to see all the students that were running around, looking at each other's work and performing and stuff. And then, and then on Saturday, went to Asian Heritage Celebration in Dublin, that was just really, really amazing and beautiful to, to see, so that's my report.
So most of them have already been reported, because we were all at several of them, but just to add on, I got to do the school finance presentation also for the Tassahara Hills Foundation, and I think all of us are enjoying the engagement we're having with PTAs and foundations, and all I can say is, keep inviting us, because it's really nice to sit with, you know, a small group of parents and, and explain how this works, and I think it's appreciated, and so that interaction is, is very welcome. I think I can say that for all of us. Thursday night, we have a CCC SBA meeting, which I think one of you mentioned, it's virtual and/or online, whichever you want to do. And then I also have CSBA Delegate Assembly this weekend, it's Saturday and Sunday, and for the first time that I've experienced, they're actually breaking us into breakouts, and we're discussing some four key questions. It's great to see CSBA really engaging with the delegates and then using that engagement to, for their platform in terms of how they are continuing to advocate for not only funding, but other things related to what kids need.
Thank you. And yes, a number of things have already been covered, just to cover a couple others. First, Laura mentioned our meeting with Danville and San Ramon, that also included Contra Costa County, and Candace Anderson was there, I was, I was honored to facilitate that meeting, and it's just a real opportunity that a lot of people don't necessarily recognize the amount of synergy between our different agencies here in the valley, the amount of things that we do together, even though we have different missions in covering our communities by working together, we're actually creating greater quality of life for our community just by the relationships that we've built between these different bodies. And so that's always been very helpful, and this was our annual meeting of that group. Also, Rachel and I, as mentioned earlier, participated in student board member interviews, and we're looking forward to our, our next Ronnet, as it were, and we'll see how that goes soon. I also had the opportunity last week to attend what was known as Tri-Valley Innovation, which is a, an organization that looks to, it's really economic development oriented. They had a luncheon for what they called their Dreammakers and Risk Takers Awards, and there were eight awards given, and these are student awards, and of the eight, we had students that received two of those. Gavin Jin from Montevista received an award for his, work he's done with homeless population in Livermore, and he's a, he's a junior, going to be a senior. And, uh, he's a, he's a junior, going to be a senior. Uh, and then a 10th grader out of Doherty Valley, Gaddick Travetti, um, done work with biomedical work, which was just astounding. In fact, um, the person who introduced him was the CEO of Stanford Health Systems. Um, and it's, and he was blown away by the type of work that we had one of our 10th graders do, um, in support of the community. And again, uh, Dr. Malloy made reference to, you know, the many, many awards and recognitions that our students and staff receive, and I just had this great opportunity. In fact, it was funny because, um, Montevista had invited me to participate. The award that, um, Gaddick received though, was part of their, um, uh, digital presentations that the group itself had decided, so we didn't even know as a district about that part of it. So it was exciting to hear that here's another one of our students who's doing just tremendous work, not just within the classroom, but outside. Um, this weekend, I have a couple of events coming up that are a little different. I'll be down in Mel Peters, um, supporting a rewards presentation for kids who are, uh, involved in learning their Toluqo or Telugu, Toluqo language. Um, it's a, it's a program, uh, that spans a number of communities, including San Ramon and Danville. And so they've asked me to come down and help support them, and I've done that before, and it's a great opportunity. And then on Sunday, another one which we've, really need to highlight, um, because it, you know, we spoke, we speak a lot about our students in A to G. Um, on Sunday, uh, Danville and San Ramon host a military swearing-in ceremony for those students who have decided to go to the military. Uh, and some of them are to the military schools, but others are just, um, upping up into, uh, the military branches. And, uh, and so I look forward to attending that as well and acknowledging and recognizing those students, uh, who are taking that step as the next part of their lives. So, um, that's it for me. Dr. Malloy, any last words?
I'm good.
Great. Well, we're all looking forward to graduations, some with a big grin, maybe even more than the rest of us who get to at least stand on stage. But, uh, again, Ronnet, best wishes to you, to everyone else. Have a great rest of the evening. Uh, at this point, we're going to adjourn this meeting, however, the board is going to go back into closed session to deal with one additional topic we didn't get to before this meeting. So, meeting adjourned.